Good afternoon, everyone. The time is now 5:30 PM. If we can all take our seats, if there is a seat, and we are going to get started. Calling this meeting to order, it has been duly posted as required by state law. We do have a commission, I'm sorry, a quorum of the commission as all commissioners are present. At this time, I'll ask for us all to please rise as Commissioner Kinsley leads us in the invocation.
Yes, ma'am. To break from tradition in honor of Child Abuse Prevention Month, I'd like to invite Ms. Janet McGee up to the podium to lead us in the invocation this evening.
Thank you. I'd like to start with a prayer for child, sorry, I'm going to open with a poem. It's, "I have a pebble in my shoe. I don't know why it's there, but every step I take it hurts and it's more than I can bear. It came the day my parents left. I've had it for so long. I must be bad to have such luck. I wish I could be strong. I wonder if my family knows I'm crippled and in pain. I heard that they're not coming back. I guess I am to blame. I look for help to heal my pain that holds me back each day. And many work to keep me safe, but still the pebbles stayed. Then one day I prayed to God, are you real and true? Can you send someone to help? I think, I think he sent you." Let's pray. Lord, thank you, thank you, that we live in a city that loves its children. And, Lord, we thank you that you care what happens. You care about the thousand children who are receiving services in our county. You have built a team here of people who want to go forward and acknowledge these youth in their pain and then take whatever steps it takes, whatever financial needs these kids have, whatever emotional and spiritual needs the city comes together for these children. I ask you to bless the children, Lord, and bless those who rescue them in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Now, with Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark, if you'd, a conflict of interest, please?
Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a commission member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
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 Item number three, announcements. With respect to items not listed elsewhere on this agenda, City Commission may report on items of community interest, including announcing community events, announcing employer community recognition. Three A, Mayor's announcements. Mayor, do you have any announcements?
I have a brief announcement. I'd like to invite staff from the animal shelter to introduce to us the pet of the week.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission. We have with us tonight, we have Ms. Tinkles.
Hopefully, she doesn't tinkle.
No, we already took care of that. She's about a year old, she's about 20 pounds. She has been with us since March 1st. So she's been with us just a little over a month. She's a really sweet dog. She gets along with other dogs, she gets along with people. She's a little nervous with this many people, but she's still doing amazing. She's looking for her forever home and she will be at the shelter. Anybody who might be interested in Ms. Tinkles or any of the other animals at the shelter are welcome to go by and visit them. Between 1:00 and 6:00, they're open seven days a week at 1106 Markowski. So this is Ms. Tinkles.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. And for those of you that are in attendance, we do have a full house. If you want an extended, an invitation to, you've been given an invitation to the shelter, but I know that you can do adoptions everywhere. So I know that they're available if you'd like to meet Ms. Tinkles. Thank you so much. And that is all I have, Amanda.
Item 3B, City Manager's announcements.
Just a reminder that I'll be out of town on April 7th through the 10th attending a text burst conference in Dallas. But I'll be available by cell phone, so feel free to call.
Item 3C, City Commission Members' announcements.
I just have one. I want to congratulate Javier and the Parks people for the great job in scattering 45,000 eggs out at the soccer complex on Saturday for the Easter egg extravaganza. Forty-five thousand eggs. And I doubt if there were any left. These are like vacuum cleaners. They're a great job.
I just want to wish the Harlingen Cardinals, boys and girls soccer teams are playing tonight in the round three of the playoffs. I wish them good luck on behalf of the city and hopefully get the win.
Yes.
Item four, presentation of awards. Ape, proclaiming the week of April 14th through the 20th, 2024 as National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week.
Good evening, everyone. It looks like we have a full house today. So it's really nice that all of you guys have come out to join us. We have quite a few awards and recognitions, so we'll just get started. Firstly, we are proclaiming National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week. And here to accept this proclamation and be recognized, and if you could please stand when I call your name, is Health Director Shannon Harville, Animal Control Officers Gabriel Hernandez, Jay Garza, and Jamie Garcia. And before I have them come up to share a few words and take a photo, I'd like to read the proclamation and it reads as follows. Whereas the National Animal Control Association has designated the second full week of April each year as National Animal Control Appreciation Week, whereas various federal, state, and local government officials throughout the country take this time to recognize, thank, and commend all animal control officers and animal service staff for the dedicated service they provide to citizens, various public safety and public service agencies, and the departments across the country. And whereas in 2023, the City of Harlingen Animal Control received 10,656 calls, handled 1,997 strays, picked up 1,919 animals in traps, and addressed 178 bite cases. And whereas the City of Harlingen recognizes the animal control officers for the many dedicated and long hours of service they perform in serving residents of our community and fulfilling City of Harlingen Animal Control's commitment to providing the highest and most efficient level of customer service. And now therefore, I, Norma Sepulveda, Mayor of Harlingen, on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim April 14th through the 20th, 2024 as National Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week. If you would like to come to the front to share a few words.
Thank you. These three gentlemen work very hard, day in, day out, addressing all the calls that come in. They are here to serve the citizens of Harlingen and they do that proudly each and every day. Five days a week, for sure. A lot of times it turns into seven days a week. They are very dedicated, they love animals, they want the best for the animals while keeping the public safe. And they are just very dedicated, hardworking people, and we are grateful to have them on staff.
Thank you, Shannon, for your leadership and for your entire team. We appreciate all the hard work and all your efforts in keeping our community safe. If you can please join us up in the front so you can take a picture with myself and the commission.
We're missing one proclamation, probably it's downstairs, Mayor. So can you?
Melinda, will you?
Community Development?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go ahead and pass on that one for now. Melinda, will you grab that for us? And just, we can move on to the next one, Calista.
Okay. Item 4C, proclaiming the month of April 2024 as National Healthy Home Month.
Okay, so next we are proclaiming National Healthy Homes Month. And here joining us today to accept is Community Development Director Sandy Alvarez. And I'll read the proclamation before she joins us up here. Whereas the month of April is National Healthy Homes Month and the theme is making an impact, healthy, safe, and resilient homes. And whereas since 2014, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, Office of Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes, through National Healthy Homes Month, has educated the public, policymakers, public health, and housing professionals, and caregivers about the issues important to healthy homes. And whereas healthy homes and safety hazards, including physical safety hazards, lead-based paint, radon, mold, pests, and allergens cause or contribute to a wide range of illnesses and diseases, including lead poisoning, asthma, cancer, and injuries. And whereas lead poisoning affects thousands of Texas children under the age of six, and whereas accidents in the home hurt thousands of Texas people each year, and whereas hundreds of Texas people are harmed by improperly stored chemicals in the home, and whereas dozens of Texas people are harmed by carbon monoxide poisoning each year, and whereas many Texas families and households are unaware that their homes can have serious health hazards, and now it be resolved that I, Norma Sepulveda, Mayor of Harlingen, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as National Healthy Homes Month in support of this valuable program that is making a tremendous contribution to produce safe, healthy, and climate-resilient homes in Harlingen. And Sandy, if you'd like to come to the front?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This year is the first year that the City of Harlingen does receive a grant for healthy homes. We received a million dollars. We're currently just getting off, getting it off the ground. So we haven't started with the application process, but we are getting all of that going. So we're here today. In addition to myself, I have my staff here, which is Veronica Sanchez, Nicole Rios, Nancy Garcia. They're here joining us. And in addition to that, we also have our board members. Not everyone could make it, but we have Mr. Cesar Morales, Mr. Jim Young, Ms. Sonia Casas, and Ms. Lorraine Galarza. And we're very excited to get this program going. We actually already have over 70 people on the list that are waiting to, to get services that we, we're going to offer. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Sandy, for all of your hard work. And Sandy, if you'd like to invite your staff and members of the board to appear in front with the commission so we can get a photo.
She likes for us to get pictures of them speaking. When the next person is...
Hey, how you doing? Good to see you too. I, I think it was.
There we go.
Item 4D, proclaiming the month of April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Today, we are also proclaiming Child Abuse Prevention Month. And joining us here today is Heather Smith. And before I invite her up here, I will read the next proclamation. Whereas it is necessary to build a robust family well-being system that not only supports families when they are in crisis, but is intentional in supporting families before they are in crisis. In Texas, we believe that children thrive in safe, stable, nurturing families within their own communities. Through establishing partnerships with families that capitalize on the collective strength of parents and their children, we can build strong, healthy families and resilient communities where children can thrive. Whereas sadly, child maltreatment is still a significant public health issue, communities that lack accessible supports and resources can experience increased risk factors that lead to child abuse and neglect. Despite the complex factors that can lead to child maltreatment, it can be prevented. Whereas each year, the month of April is dedicated to recognizing the critical work being done across our great state to support families before a crisis occurs and offer them accessible lifelines that mitigate the challenges that they face. Child abuse prevention occurs every day, child abuse prevention occurs every day through the diligent work tirelessly advic, tire, sorry, tireless advocacy and simple acts of kindness undertaken by Texas families, friends, neighbors, houses of faith, advocacy groups, nonprofit organizations, schools, healthcare providers, social workers, and government agencies to support children and families in every community across the Lone Star State. Whereas child abuse prevention cannot be tasked to one community agency or system. Behind families that succeed on their own is a strong community that provided a way for the family to meet their needs. All Texans must work together to strengthen our communities and build localized supports that are accessible, contribute to the well-being of an entire community, and keep children and families safe and together. I encourage all Texans to learn more about the many aspects of our great communities working hard to create positive, healthy environments for future leaders of our great state and nation. Together, we can create a brighter future for children, families, and communities in Texas and ensure future leaders have the support they need to thrive and reach their potential. Therefore, I, Norma Sepulveda, Mayor of Harlingen, do hereby proclaim April 2024 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in Texas and urge the appropriate recognition whereup. And Heather, if you would like to join me at the podium to say a few words.
Mayor Sepulveda asked that I share a speech that I attended last week with her. I had never intended on being a foster parent. We had never planned on adopting children. We were the typical American family in a two-income household, living in a nice house in a nice neighborhood with my two kids, my son Andrew and my daughter Lauren. My husband Dole is with me today. He is a firefighter for the City of Harlingen and I am a nurse practitioner at Valley Baptist Orthopedics and Sports Medicine. We have a dog named Bianca. I drive an SUV, literally the typical American family. I now vividly remember when my journey began. It was a little over two years ago. I was cooking dinner and talking with my daughter Lauren about school and friends, typical teen girl mom talk. She would ask me questions like, if my friends, my friends ran away from home and came to our house, what would you do? I would tell her that I would love them, hug them, feed them, and then call their parents because they would not be my children to keep. She was persistent with more questions, like what if they are being abused? Like really abused? This is where I admit that I was naive to the evils of child abuse in my community. I minimize the issue. Surely, it's just teenagers fighting with their parents. Surely, no parent would do such things to their child. I repeatedly told Lauren that she should tell her friends to tell an adult, a teacher, the school counselor, anyone. And that is what my girls had the courage to do. They spoke up. They told their school counselor. And over the next two months, they learned about things no child should be exposed to. They learned about CART exams, police investigations, CPS investigators, caseworkers, criminal charges, bond agreements, and child advocacy centers. All of this resulted in the one person that was supposed to protect them the most, surrendering them to the care of the state. On December 6th, 2021, two brave girls found themselves at Valley Haven, an emergency shelter for children in CPS custody. My daughter's friends were at Valley Haven, but only for nine days. That is when my learning began and I became naive no more. I learned about fictive kinship, CPS caseworkers, CASA volunteers, attorneys, Attorneys Adlitem, court hearings, and most importantly, the effects of trauma on a young person. From kinship placement to foster care determination of parental rights, I kept learning more and more about hurting children in my community, your community. Did you know that only 3% of girls in the foster care system ever graduate from college? Did you know that only 80 to, somewhere around 80 to 90% of kids that age out of foster care end up homeless, incarcerated, or dead within two years? Why didn't I know this? More people should know this. Once in our home, these girls, loving them came easy to me. They were grateful, respectful, and helpful. They were talkative. My house turned into a teen girl slumber party that never ended. My husband and I made every effort to give them space, lots of different kinds of space. It was a safe space, free of abuse, a quiet space to think, a soft place to fall on a rough day, a space where they could laugh and relax, a gentle space where they could learn to trust again, a comfortable space where they could say what's on their mind, a space that would nurture growth, a space that would encourage dreams. The older sister turned 18 within a year of being with us. She chose independence and moved out. She took advantage of programs like Preparation of Adult Living Skills, the PALS program, Supervised Independent Living, and the tuition waiver. We still have a relationship with her today and continue to mentor her as she navigates adulthood, although challenging. To be honest, these girls were going to be a part of my life legally or by choice. They were members of my family. We were consistently and frequently encouraged to adopt Maya, the younger sister. My reservations at the beginning were mostly financial. I had never planned on having three children. What about college? What about weddings? But Maya deserved every benefit possible, everything to maximize her benefits. But this absolutely came at a cost. Even though we have fantastic caseworkers, it felt like a revolving door of people in our home reminding me of her trauma. Imagine every 90 days, every doctor's visit you attend, every medication you take, every life skill you learn, every grade you make, every wrongdoing, everything discussed in a courtroom in front of strangers and even aired on YouTube. So at the early part of 2023, we started to ask ourselves, why aren't we adopting? The decision was ultimately up to Maya. She was 17 years old and I said yes, and so did she. Adoption really didn't take long. It was about a month and $1,000 out of pocket. And on April 10th, 2023, we became a family of five. And this is when Maya took ownership of her own life. She has now graduated early from Triumph Public High Schools. She is now working for a local insurance office and preparing to attend UTRGV in the fall with plans to major in business. She has even already started saving for retirement. We are still navigating the judicial system and awaiting the trial of our abuser. Our journey is not over. It's just begun. But I assure you, we could never have survived this process without devoted child advocacy workers and agencies that mentored us along the way. In just two short years, numerous agencies and people have provided services to my family. Many are with me here today. So if anybody, as I call out the names, if anybody is involved with these agencies, either wave or stand up. Harlingen Police Department, Coombs Police Department, Valley Baptist Emergency Department CART Team, Valley Haven Emergency Shelter, Valley Children's Clinic, Child Advocacy Center of Harlingen, Cameron County District Attorney's Office and the Crime Victims Advocates, Honorable James Velton Family Court, Attorney Starr Jones, Attorney Adlitem Elizabeth Valdez, Adoption Attorney Alex Gayaga, CASA, especially Lacey in the Forest, the emotional support dog. Who doesn't know Forest? Upbring Foster Care Agency, Foster Angels of South Texas, Ms. Maggie Perez, School Counselor and all the administrators of Harlingen School of Health Professions, Jeffrey Moeen, Trauma Counselor, and Blue Sunday, Child Abuse Prevention, sorry. Multiple programs through the Department of Family and Protective Services, such as the Fictive Kinship Program, Foster Care Support, Investigators, Caseworkers, and the Adoption Unit. Our caseworker is Sanmoni T. Cortez. She is absolutely incredible. I assure you, this is an all-hands-on-deck approach to support children that have been abused. April is Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. Although the numbers vary slightly each day, the current numbers as of February 2023 for Cameron County include 249 calls to the abuse hotline. This resulted in 160 investigations. Thirteen children were removed from the home. The current census of foster care in Cameron County is 267, with 120 of those residing with family members. There are 84 children currently free and clear and ready for adoption in Cameron County. And in fiscal year 2023, there was one child abuse-related death in Cameron County. Child abuse continues to be an issue for so many in our community. I know that my story is not unique. I encourage you to engage in the people represented here today. They can share with you endless stories of family reunification, healing, adoptions, and more. And with me today is also Janet McGee, founder of Blue Sunday. This year is the 30th anniversary of Blue Sunday Child Abuse Prevention. It is a nonprofit organization with two goals, to meet the needs of abused children in the Rio Grande Valley and raise awareness of child abuse among the faith community. The last Sunday in April is designated as Blue Sunday, a nationally recognized day of prayer for abused children. Blue Sunday also offers possible solutions for ending child abuse through prayer and addiction treatments while also addressing issues like cycle of abuse and poverty. If you know of any spiritual leaders nationwide that would be interested in learning about becoming a blue ribbon church, Janet offers free materials. I am an active member of Faith Christian Church and we are proudly a blue ribbon church here in Harlingen. Janet has more information with her here today. She also brought pinwheels, thus the pinwheels. Pinwheels are the national symbol of child abuse prevention because by its very nature, the pinwheel promotes playfulness, joy, and childhood. I am grateful for the opportunity to share this information with you today. Child abuse is usually not a topic that's enjoyable to discuss, but I believe that our community is full of good people doing great things for the vulnerable. I, along with numerous child advocacy workers with me today, am encouraged that you have chosen to join us in promoting April as Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. Thank you for your time.
Heather, I don't know how many times I've told you that you're an amazing human being, but I think I'm just going to keep repeating that. And God bless you and your family for everything that you've done for those two girls and everything that you continue to do to be advocates for those that don't have a voice of their own. And so we appreciate all of you, all of those that are in the audience. I waved your hands and were, took part in, even if it's a small part, it all takes, like you mentioned, it takes a village. And so if all of us can contribute in whatever way that we can, then we can at least move the needle. And I think that is the message here, that we can do something. You might not be able to do everything, but we can do something. So thank you so much. We do have a proclamation. I'd like to invite, I think you brought a few, yes.
Anybody from the Department of...
I know there's Azella, and we've got a few more. And if the commission can join me, please.
Going back to item C, Mayor. Item B?
Why don't you go ahead and get the kids? Let's do the kids and then we'll go back.
Okay. Item 4E, Recognition of Award, Harlingen Collegiate High Robotics Teams.
So our recognition award is going to the Harlingen Collegiate High Robotics Teams, Team 11158 and Team 13108. And here joining us today is Head Coach Mercedes Espinoza and Coach Jose Oviedo. And I believe the teams are here as well. If you guys want to stand. So they're receiving this recognition award for land, Team 13108 landed a first place Inspire Award at League Tournament and second place Inspire Award at Area Tournament. And Team 11158 landed first place Connect Award at League and Area Tournament. So if we could give them a round of applause. And Coach Espinoza, if you'd like to come up.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Thank you for this wonderful award, and I'd like to bring up our four officers, Natalie Flores, Don Gerardo, I can't say that right, Gerardro, sorry, Joey Gerardo, and Jacob Bird. And they just have a few comments to make with Natalie.
Hi, so on behalf of the HCH Robotics Officers, I would like to thank you so much for this amazing recognition. And then also a congratulations to all our members and our coaches for such a tremendous season with all our hard work and our dedication. It truly does show, so thank you.
Thank you.
And of course, if I want to add one more thing, thank you very much to all the parents for bringing them and helping us out with everything, especially for our trip up to state and everything else, and all those that showed up to support us, and our principal, Dr. Flores. Thank you so much for all your support.
Well, we are so incredibly proud of each and every one of you. We know how much work it goes into, into these competitions, so we commend you for all your hard work and congratulations again. What an accomplishment. If I can get ready for the picture with the commission, please.
Item 4F, Recognition of Award, Memorial Middle School Raiders Chess Teams.
So our next recognition award goes to the Memorial Middle School Mighty Raiders Chess Team. I believe joining us here today is Michael Salinas, Coach Salinas, and Coach Manuel Gonzalez. And they are receiving this recognition for an exceptional season and outstanding accomplishment in their main team placed third at state level and will compete at national level in Atlanta, Georgia on May 10th through the 12th of 2024. And their all-girls team secured Texas State Championships on September 29th, 2023 in Brownsville, Texas, and will be attending Nationals in Chicago, Illinois on April 12th through the 14th of 2024. So if you want to give them a round of applause. And if Coach Salinas is here, if you want to approach.
So first and foremost, I want to say thank you for recognizing us and giving us this opportunity to be showcased in front of our peers and our community. I just want to say, take this time to say thank you to my parents, to my students. Memorial hasn't had a chess team in forever. And so last year, you know, I was just some dumb teacher looking to, I mean, that's the best way I could say it, just trying to figure out how to, how to start up a chess team. I literally pulled Jalen, Marco, Gabby, they're my students. I say, hey, you want to join chess? They said, we don't know anything about it. She's going to get embarrassed, but I always tell the story. Gabriella, go ahead and stand up, Gabriella.
With the trophy.
She asked me, is it anything like checkers? I said, I don't think you're going to make the team sit down. But first and foremost, these guys have put in so much work, so much effort, so much time. I can only begin to list the accomplishments they've done. We went from, my principal said it best, we went from zero to Nationals. We had no chess team, and our first year, we competed against some of the best in the state, and we actually coaledified last year, our first year, and we continue to set that tradition at Memorial. This is the first year that my girls actually make it. This is our first year competing. We're going to be representing the great city of Harlingen in Chicago, so we're super excited for that. So again, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity to showcase us, showcase our team. My friends would kill me if I didn't just share what powerhouse we have here in Harlingen. HSHP, the Health Professions, is also state champions. They won four state championships this year. Dishman this past week, a couple of weekends ago at state, won first place in the elementary section. Bonham did it last year. So we, chess is definitely up and coming. Brownsville has been dedicated, the city for the capital of chess in Texas, but I think we need to switch it to Harlingen. But thank you so much for this opportunity, guys. I appreciate it.
Wow, what an accomplishment. You know, kudos to you for starting from, from the ground up and making it all the way. And we wish you the best of luck in Chicago, and we hope you bring home the win, but you are already all winners in our book. Such an accomplishment with really no experience and, and just having you to encourage them. That's, that's wonderful, and I thank you for all you do. If I can get the commission to join us for a photo?
Item number 4B, Proclaiming the Week of April 1st through the 5th, 2024 as Community Development Block Grant Week and 50th Year Celebration.
To accept this proclamation will be Sandy again. Before I invite her up, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas Community Development Block Grant Program has existed since 1974 to provide local governments with the resources required to primarily meet the needs of low and moderate income persons. And whereas the City of Harlingen receives a direct allocation from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development annually to provide resources for a wide variety of community development activities that principally benefit low and moderate income persons, including the elderly and children. And whereas the Community Development Block Program has provided the City of Harlingen with important financial assistance to meet the needs of low and moderate income residents by funding sewer, water, and street improvement projects, public facility projects, housing projects, and other public service projects. And whereas in our community and in communities throughout the nation, Community Development Block Grant Program funding has developed a strong network of relationships among local governments, residents, businesses, and nonprofit organizations. And whereas the Week of April 1st through the 5th, 2024 has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate, recognize, and appreciate the Community Development Block Grant Program. Now therefore, I, Norma Sepulvila, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, do hereby proclaim the Week of April 1st, 2024 through April 5th, 2024 as Community Development Block Grant Week in support of this valued program that has made a tremendous contribution to the viability of the housing stock, infrastructure, public services, and economic vitality of our community. Sandy, if you'd like to come up to the podium?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, again. So this is our 50th anniversary, I am very happy to say. I'm actually very pleased to be working in this department. We are very fortunate and blessed that we're able to help the less fortunate. In fact, we fund organizations such as CASA, Maggie's House, Boys and Girls Club, Loaves and Fishes, Family Crisis Center, Sunshine Haven. There's a number of agencies that have been funded through our department. Fortunately, the City of Harlingen is an entitlement community for these funds, and we are very lucky to have this, these funds that we can share with the community, with the less fortunate. We also fund programs, parks, lighting, streets, street improvements, owner-occupied rehabilitation, reconstruction, demolition of unsafe structures, and so on and so on. So in honor of CDBG Week, we are, we, our staff did put together some frames with accomplishments, and I invite you all to come by our department and see all the lovely pictures that our sub-receipients have sent to us to showcase. On Friday, we are going to have probably between 2 and 3 some refreshments and sweets and whatnot. If y'all would like to come by, you're welcome to, as well as the community. So thank you. I'm very blessed to have this position and to be with the City of Harlingen doing this.
Thank you. And we are very blessed to have you leading at the helm, so thank you and your staff. And we can get one more photograph with all the rock stars.
Get one over here. Ready, one, two, and three. One more. One, two, and three. Got it.
And a big thank you to Kalista and Brandon. We appreciate you. Let's moving on.
Item number five, Citizens Communication. At this time, the public is invited to address the City Commission and speak on any matter not specifically listed for public hearing elsewhere in this agenda. Please note that the City Commission members may not respond to comments or deliberate on topics addressed. We have one mayor for Citizens Communication, and it's Mr. Raymond Reyes.
Come on up, Mr. Reyes.
Mayor, Commissioners, Raymond Reyes, 706 Nantucket. What can I say? There's a lot of things that, that have been coming to light. Of course, the biggest thing, I guess, would be the, the water thing. Another big thing that I'm still surprised that something hasn't been come up with is I have a lot of friends that have businesses at the mall. The mall continues to struggle. Apparently, they own property taxes, and there's all kinds of other things going on. I would think that maybe some kind of plan or something can be formulated to ensure that these businesses that in general are struggling as it is, you know, there's just still ongoing tough times. I wasn't too sure. I see that our website was revamped. There's a lot of aspects of the website that are not working correctly. I mentioned it to, to some individuals that are on, on the commission and stuff. I know the staff does the best they can with what they got, but being an IT, I know that it should be checked and rechecked and make sure that everything's working the way it should. I know there was a couple of posts today about some dogs, aggressive dogs, that were loose. loose in certain aspect of the city. And right off the bat, when you go to get the phone number of who to notify, there was like seven different numbers. And I went through a couple of them. Then I had some individuals that do things for me, go through them. So I was, I was able to get through finally and let them know and stuff. So we want to make sure we have the correct information so our citizens can notify the certain departments about what's going on and stuff to make sure they get hold of the right people that oversee that. I know the police department was contacted, but they really don't have nothing to do with that stuff. So again, as I've stated before, I think it's very critical to have correct oversight. And I myself signed up for the citizen comments, but I've been aware of the ongoing issue with the water in the city for a while. And I didn't know how to sign up for that, so I just signed up for the comments section again because I'd like to speak on that behalf. Because there's a lot of things that, you know, I think should have been addressed prior to getting to where we're at and stuff. It's not like it was an issue that was hiding. It's been an ongoing problem. I know most of the commission was not in place at the time when all these things were up. But in my opinion, if certain individuals knew that there was a problem, then it should have been brought to the commission's attention so it could have been addressed earlier. And that's all I got, so I'll just wait until we go through the cycle again.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. At this time, we are going to take items a little out of order. And so I'd like to move on to the executive session because we do have our CEO here that needs to be in another location and continue to working, so we want to make sure to get him out here quickly. So at this time, we're moving on to item 12, Executive Session. All items listed in the section. We have item 12A pursuant to Government Code, Section 551.071 Attorney Consultation and Contemplated Litigation, Section 551.072 Deliberation Regarding Real Estate, and Section 551.087 Economic Development Relating to Project Blacktop. Item B pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.07 regarding setting goals for the city manager. And item C pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 to consult with legal counsel regarding pending collective bargaining agreement with the fire union. At this time, is there a motion to go into Executive Session?
Motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The time is now 6:23 PM and we will retire to Executive Session and be out shortly. Thank you for your patience.
Right, the time is now 7:06 PM and we are out of Executive Session and back in open session. And is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
And the motion is to proceed?
Motion to proceed out of Executive Session.
Proceed as discussed.
Oh, motion is to proceed as discussed in Executive Session.
Okay, and that's for item 12A. Is there a vote? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And now Amanda?
We need an item for 12C.
12C? Yes. Yes, is there another motion?
Motion to proceed as discussed in Executive Session, item 12C.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Amanda?
Moving on with item number six, Approval of Minutes Regular Meeting of February 7th, 2024.
Is there any amendments?
Motion to approve, there were two minor pen changes that I already gave to Amanda.
I gave her two more, so potentially. So make a motion to approve, subject to the topographical amendments, Commissioner.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number seven, Consent Agenda. No discussion is anticipated on any of the items in this section because they are routine business or included in the budget adoption process or have been previously discussed as a staff report or discussion item. These items will be considered collectively by a single vote unless a commissioner member requests an item to be removed from the consent agenda. Seven.
Make a motion to approve all consent agenda items.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number eight, Staff Reports and Other Discussion Items. Items in this section are not expected to require action by the City Commission or generally for information only. However, any item listed in this section may become an action item with the request of the mayor or after the request of any two commissioner members or the city manager. A, City Manager's Report.
I just have one item. Cameron County Appraisal District is going to begin having sessions in Harlingen for residents to review their property values. They want to have them April 11th, 12th, and 17th through the 19th and they've asked us to provide a facility. We're looking at Casa de Amistad for that, so that'll be coming up later this month. That's all I have.
Item A B, Stephen?
Gabe, one second, Amanda. At the last meeting we did, there was a motion to table the creation of the nonprofit for the animal shelter and I was supposed to come back to this meeting and I just realized that it's not on the agenda. Is that something that we are working on? I think I asked Mark to look at the library.
We're looking at it and we'll present it at the next meeting.
Okay, the next one, okay. That's all I have, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No problem. Item A B, Staff Reports, Presentation by Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool, TML, Human Resources.
Mayor, Consul, thank you for having us here. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Johnny Vera. I am your Safety and Loss Control Consultant with the Risk Pool.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission and city management. My name is Claudia Poblano and I am your Risk Management Advisor with the Texas Municipal League Risk Pool.
Like I said, it's a pleasure to be here, especially this year. We're celebrating our 50th anniversary, working with local government in the state of Texas. And one of the things I do want to share again is that we are privileged that Harlingen is a member for 34 years. They've been a member of the Risk Pool. And over those 34 years, it's always been a hospitality for us to come here and warmth. In those 34 years, you guys have hosted over 200 training sessions, not only to the city but surrounding members. It probably totals up to more than 2,400 employees getting trained in their respective fields. So I'm going to go over a couple of slides with you just to again reiterate who we are and what we do for the city and the other members. Like I said before, it's a partnership. Even though probably most of us see us as an insurance company or they're the guys that provide our workers' comp or auto liability. We are not a traditional insurance company. We don't, we don't act like an insurance company. We don't work like an insurance company and we sure don't treat members as an insurance company would. What I mean that is it's truly a partnership where we, we share the risk and we partner with everybody trying to make sure that our main goal is to reduce the claims out there and save the city or the members money by making sure that the contributions are low. So by the numbers again, just to, just to share how big the partnership is, we serve about almost over 98% of local governments in the state of Texas. It's over 2,800 entities. 96% of the cities in the state of Texas are part of the Risk Pool. That includes appraisal districts, housing authorities, drainage districts, anybody that's in local government, we do share partnerships with them. And again, our traditional coverages are workers' comp, liability, property, cyber, and special risk. But again, I do want to reiterate, and this is something that I do when I do training sessions for you guys, your staff, is that we are not an insurance company. We don't work like that. We really try to partner with everybody and make sure that, one, we create awareness, we educate the employee, and really try to prepare them for the work ahead.
I have a question. How do you determine the value of the property that you provide coverage for?
Yes, so when you as a city first add a property, you provide us with the value that you wish to cover. So that would be the value for the real property, that's your building, your structure, and then the value for its contents, if there are any. So that would be your personal property. So you provide us with that value and that's what gets added to your schedule. Then there may be times where we apply an inflationary factor. So for example, given inflation, we may apply a 10% increase to your values across the board. So there may be times that there are adjustments made like that. But ultimately, it comes down to the value that the city gives us when adding as a new property. So some of Harlingen's, or all of Harlingen's coverages are on the next slide. So we have your workers' compensation, your liability coverages, which include general liability, law enforcement, errors and omissions, auto liability, auto physical damage, and auto catastrophe. For property coverages, you have your real and personal property, flood and earthquake, boiler, machinery, mobile equipment, crime. And I've included what the crime coverages are that you've elected. And then cyber liability would be the other coverage that you have with the Risk Pool. And as far as how we come up with the contribution that the city would contribute to the pool every year, we take your experience, which is another word for your losses. Your, then we apply the rate. So there's a different rate per coverage and then the exposure. So as an example, workers' compensation, the experience would be, we would look at the last three years of losses. So that means that claims older than three years would no longer be considered as part of that equation. So it would be three years of claims plus the rates. For workers' compensation as an example, there's a different rate per classification code of employee. And then the exposure would be your payroll. So looking at those three, those three components is how we come up with the contribution to the pool for, like I said, each of those coverages.
Going back to the loss prevention and the role that I play with the pool. We offer member contact and risk assessments. That's one of the benefits that being part of the Risk Pool is. And risk assessments is something that we, we drive with every member, making sure that we look at the losses, we analyze them, and then of course we come back with recommendations and training needed for, to, to, to address those trends that we're seeing on those risk assessments. We also offer risk assessments not only for entire city, for the entire loss activity, but also department, department section. For example, we can go into the police or the public works and look at their losses and, and make a determination of, okay, this is probably the training that's needed or development that's needed. These are my recommendations for you guys to influence that trend and lower the, the trend. And again, the whole thing is making sure that we, if I go back to a slide, making sure that we help you reduce contributions. Again, not like an insurance, we, on the contrary, we try to collect less from you every year. I would rather us come back and say, okay, this year you're going to have to contribute less than next year. And that happens again by working together as a partner, analyzing the, the losses and then working on the recommendations that we put forth on it. Training and education, even though we're not in a trained organization per se, we do have three consultants that are experts at that field and we try to cover all the vital points of the city or local government operations. If it's heavy equipment, we have a heavy equipment consultant that specializes in skill development and training for heavy equipment, human resources, and of course, law enforcement. Speaking of training though, again, 200 training events you guys have hosted over the last 34 years, that's remarkable and I really appreciate that. Aside from training, we also offer resources and publications specifically designed to enhance the safety awareness of the city or the member and continue that education aside from the in-person trainings that we have. So we have online learning, it's a computer-based learning that is offered to the city at no charge for being, again, a member of the Risk Pool. We have publications such as TIPS and that's actually an acronym, says Together Improving Processes and Safety. That is a monthly publication that we release. And it's strategic. It's either going to be based on the season that we're in. Now that we're approaching the hurricane season, we're going to start working on hurricane preparedness, heat exhaustion, and so on. Road Ready is another great initiative that we just developed a few years ago. And I would say this, guys, if you guys have not already been told by Public Works, Public Works has really gravitated to Road Ready. That's an initiative that we highlight, members that are participating in that initiative. And it's strictly designed for people that work on or near the roadway. And we cover everything from training to self-driven training for the member. They don't have to wait for us to come in and close down operations for a couple of hours to train the guys. We have publications in the site that you could download and then go at your own pace and making sure that operations still work out, work orders are being done, but we're training our folks out there and keeping them safe. And of course, the, the, the whole goal is that everybody goes home at the end of the day. So we try to recognize every member that's, that's using the Road Ready program. There are five digital badges that we award at every milestone, rather be you met with me and we did a consultation and I gave you recommendations or suggested some practices to put in place. You've held, you've hosted training for surrounding members and yourselves, or you've had member-only training, which Public Works does. As a matter of fact, we've, we've been working on a monthly basis where I come in and I train the guys or help create awareness on a specific term. And then there's the Safety Rodeo, which again, I think the Public Works is hosting one in May, May 17th, if I'm not mistaken. And then there's a Hazard Assessment, which again, the member can work with us and we complete a hazard assessments or they can do it on their own. Again, the whole program is designed to be self-driven. Once you achieve those, those five badges, we do award the member with a certificate and a plaque on it. So hopefully you'll see me again in a couple of months where I can come back and present that to you because Chris and his team have worked diligently to get to those five badges. Safety at Your Fingertips, that's another initiative we just kicked off in November. That's a text message service where we understand that supervisors, directors, and everybody at the city, they wear multiple hats and they have a lot of things to do. And sometimes it's hard for them to go to the computer, pull something out, pull a safety program out and deliver it. So what we've designed is a mass text program where we text out subscribers' safety tips on a monthly basis. We send out two texts per month, first and third week of the month. And again, it's based either on the season or the trends that we're seeing throughout the state. We're also going to be using it for emergencies. Heaven forbid there's a hurricane coming, we'll send out do's and don'ts for pre, during, and after the storm. So it's a very good, very good initiative. We, right now, again, we kicked it off in November. We have just shy of 500 subscribers already statewide that are using it. And the feedback that we're getting has just been superb. Everybody likes it, so we're developing as we go. Media Library, we have, you guys remember Blockbuster? Well, we have a media library just like that where the cities can check out DVDs and we'll send you up to three copies per month. You guys can keep them all month, use them as you need it, send it back. Everything's included, just ship it back to us.
Do people still have DVD players?
That's a good question, yes they do. And as a matter of fact, some members prefer it because they can pause it, discuss what they just saw with the team and say, hey, could that work for us? Or, you know, is it not something we can use? But to your question, yes, they do have some, but we also thought about that, especially with the new generation in our workforce, right? We're in the initial steps of rolling out a streaming service just like Netflix.
Oh, great.
So where the cities can go in there and just check out, watch a safety video on it. So we're trying to cover everything we can, be there for you guys as much as we can. And we understand that the city's extremely busy. I used to work for a city, Claudia used to work for a city. So all our recommendations and our, and our resources are behind that thought process. We've been there, we know what you guys go through. So every resource that we offer to you guys, one, is free of charge obviously, and then two, it's really now designed to be more efficient and really get that, that topic, that safety topic to your team out there in the field so they can be better out there as they're working. And again, the whole objective is everybody goes home and we can start reducing those, those claim rates. Hopefully we can come back next year and say, okay, you're going to contribute a little bit less because you guys did awesome last year.
Excuse me, right here. How many hands-on training sessions have you done in Harlingen the past year?
In the past year? In the past year? We've had several. I know, just like I said, with Public Works alone, every month this year, I've been going there with them for about an hour, covering topics. Last year, I think you hosted three heavy equipment sessions, not only for yourself, but for surrounding members, which is great. We had two sessions of HR training here, as a matter of fact, in this specific room, last year as well. Or was it in January? I'm not too sure. But you guys have always been very, very gracious in hosting us and calling us up and saying, hey, I'm having this issue. I do have departments that call me and say, hey, I'm having this issue. I'm seeing this happen a lot. Do you have anything on it? If there's something that we don't have that we do, we'll recommend it to one of those resources or an external resource that's free. Again, I never want to recommend something that you have to pay out of pocket for.
Our staff raves about you guys, and we've gone to a number of y'all's conferences. And so thank you very much for everything you guys do.
No, no, it's our pleasure. It's, it's really a partnership. That's, that's the way it is. And the member, just like yourself, are very engaged. Again, over the 34 years with 200 sessions, over 200 sessions, that just speaks volumes for us.
Well, thank you for being fantastic partners.
All right, appreciate it. The last resource, I can go on and on because we do have a lot of resources for everybody. But we do have a podcast now. It's called the Stronger Together Podcast. That's a 15-minute podcast or less designed for roles like yourselves and city management to better understand what the pool does or better understand the legal and the financial side of running a municipality. So I highly recommend that. You could, you could find all those tools on our website at tmlirp.org. Or if you want, you can give me a holler. I'd be more happy to come back and help you navigate all those resources that we have there.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you.
Item 8C, a presentation by Texas Historical Independent Celebration Association regarding Texas Fest.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Assistant City Managers, Secretaries, Attorneys, everybody here. We're so happy, we're happy to be in Harlingen. We were here a few months ago, and you all opened doors for us. You've been wonderful. And we've been working hard behind the scenes. We don't want to let you down. I think it's going to be a great event. We're called THICA, short for Texas Historical Independence Celebration Association. THICA is a lot easier. And we put together a Texas Fest where we reenact the Texas Fight for Independence that happened in 1836. And it's an educational experience for everyone, students, teachers, adults, kids, everybody. We want it to be a fun event, and we just want to thank you. Thank you. Why would we ever want to leave Harlingen? We're hoping that'll be great and hope to see you there. I've met a lot of people that I would have never had a chance to meet because I'm from Rio Hondo. She's from Rio Hondo. He's from Harlingen. But we have Samanito people and people from all over the area. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
And the dates for the event, again?
The dates are April 12th through 14th. And on the 12th is the ribbon cutting that we want to invite every one of you here to, to be part of it. We'll have cookies and tea, ice cold tea, probably not coffee because it's too hot. So I want to know if there are any questions other than when's the date, 12th through 14th? It's real close. It's coming up pretty close. We're busy, 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 and that's why we almost got here late because we're busy. We've, I've, I was with the chamber today, and everyone has been great. We love it. We love Harlingen. I don't think we'll leave here.
Well, thank you. I, I don't have any questions, but thank you so much for all the hard work that you're putting into this event and bringing it to our community. It's going to be exciting, and I know lots of people are, are talking about it. And so we look forward to it. And thank you, and we hope to, you don't want to leave, and we don't want you to leave.
Thank you, thank you.
I just want to compliment my good friend Julio on how good he looks.
And you can look just like that. You just need to give me time to make your uniform. I will buy it for you.
I was, I was gonna mention, I'm, I'm participating.
You're doing it?
I'm participating. I'm doing it. So Ford, come on over.
All right.
Daniel, Gabe, Norma, all of you guys.
Anyone, and actually, you know, I've been doing this for, for an eternity, I think. But I really enjoy it, and I learned a lot about Texas, which I didn't learn in school. But it's, it's just, it really is very near and dear to our hearts. And we always look for volunteers. And, you know, the females, all we gotta do is cry over our men, and then we walk out.
Just like in regular life.
And then, and then, and then the guys, you know, if you hear a shot, just fall on the ground. That's, that's your role. But we are in the process of, you know, getting some new uniforms and stuff like that. But we need to know, like, by this weekend, if you're willing to, to participate, anybody, you know, just need to get ahold of us. And we gave out some flyers and, and schedules. You know, we're, we're ready for you guys, and you'll have a time of your life.
Can you tell us where it's gonna be at?
It is going to be at the Fair Park Boulevard, the White, White Wings Stadium.
Harlingen Field.
Harlingen Field, yes.
Are you gonna have the cannons?
Yes, we're gonna have at least one cannon. We're hoping for three, but we'll settle for one. And muskets? Yeah, fun stuff.
It's exciting.
It's exciting, and, and, and that's why I'm still here because, you know, I just came in for fun. And, and we're still here because we want to make it great. And, and again, thank you, Harlingen.
I will await Commissioner Perez to let me, to tell me where and when to be.
All right. This Thursday, this Thursday at 6:00.
Yes, Thursday at the field, we'll be practicing drills. 6:00.
6:00 Thursday for drills with Ruben.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Item number nine, public hearings. At this time, the mayor will invite members of the public who have filled out the public hearing and the citizen communication form to address each item listed in this section. Please limit your comments to the topic of that public hearing. If more than one public hearing is being held, you will be allowed to speak during each topic provided you have filled out the public hearing and citizen's communication form for the appropriate topic. If you are signed up for two or more public hearings, you will be limited to five minutes for all topics. Mayor, we have one, and that is Raymond Reyes.
Let's, let's hold on real quick. So the public hearing, Mr. Reyes, you are here for, okay, so for Water Works, we need to start with the item 9A, Amanda.
Okay. So then, A, public hearing for a special use SUP request to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premises consumption in a general retail GR district located at the Stripes Convenience Store, located at 1610 South F Street, bearing a legal description of Block 1, Williamson Subdivision, applicant Tim Aloya. Is, is that correct? Okay.
Okay. At the, at this time, having no one here to speak for or against at this public hearing, we'll close the public hearing.
Item B, public hearing for a special use permit SUP request to allow an adult business microblading studio in a general retail GR district located at 2222 South Expressway 83, Suite 508, bearing a legal description of 1.956 acres of 3.30 acres, part of West 10.34, Lot A and Dash 1 Block 24, Lancy Hill Subdivision, applicant Daisy Nieto.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing, and having no one here to speak for or against, we will close the public hearing.
Item C, public hearing for a rezoning request from residential single-family R1 District to residential duplex R2 District for a property located at 102 North 27th Street, bearing a legal description of Lot 8, Block C, Hunter Subdivision, Number 1, applicant Martha Gillett.
At this time, we will open the public hearing and having no one here to speak for or against this item, we will now close the public hearing.
Item D, public hearing for a rezoning request from residential single-family R1 District to Plan Development District PD to allow 32-feet-wide streets with 50 feet of right-of-way one cul-de-sac to serve 28 lots, and smaller lot sizes for lots 1, 15 through 19, 21 through 33, and 36 through 48, for a proposed 80-lot single-family development on a property bearing a legal description of 15.76 acres, tract of land being all of Block 4 and a part or portions of Blocks 3, 5, and 17, Stewart Plate Subdivision located along the west side of South Palm Boulevard, approximately 480 feet south of Business Highway 83, applicant Javier Nohosa, in care of Jason E. Garza.
At this time, we will open the public hearing and having no one here to speak for or against this item, we will now close the public hearing.
E, public hearing for necessary water and sewer rate adjustments to provide for forecasters' operating expenses, capital asset costs, and funding of Harlingen Waterworks Systems five-year capital improvement plan.
At this time, we will open up the public hearing. And Mr. Reyes, thank you so much for your patience. The mic is yours.
Raymond Reyes, 706 Nan Tucket. So, yeah, so here we are with this water thing. Actually, I usually try to stay on top of things, but fortunately, I have good people that do things for me, and they brought me up to speed rather quickly over everything that was going on. And we kind of like, went to that thing on Friday, had somebody else review it because I was dealing with other things, and they brought me up to speed. The whole thing that I just don't get is that, that somebody put it, it was kind of kicked down the street for apparently decades. They knew it had to be done. Of course, this would have been the responsibility of previous commissioners, previous administrative, you know, previous mayor, however you want to word it. But the thing that I don't get is that there are certain individuals that have been in employment of the city for an extensive period of time in key positions that, you know, should have brought everybody up to speed as they're coming into office for the term because politicians sometimes get reelected or don't get reelected and stuff. So now we're at a point where, and I know it's gonna go through either way and stuff. Other business owners are concerned. I had one individual told me that, you know, they're already paying like 280 something. And a 50% increase is gonna put them right a little bit over 400 and change and stuff, which is gonna go up. So you imagine the businesses that are barely, still struggling and not making it because we've actually had some businesses that do the same thing I do, venues and stuff, that are going under and stuff. And this might actually tilt it over. My thing is, you know, prior to this coming and showing its ugly face within five years, I don't understand why, you know, I'm sure, sure the city has grant writers and things. Why was, why wasn't this addressed initially? That, you know what, we have this infrastructure project that needs to be addressed. We haven't done it in over 30 years, or whatever the case may be. And now we're at the point where it has to be done. I mean, it's a must. Progress is progress. It's gonna, it's coming. Whether, we, we can't turn our back to it, whether it's in technology or infrastructure, whatever the case may be. So some citizens aren't gonna feel the same way I do about it. It's, it's gonna happen. It's something that, that we'll have to adjust to. But some people don't get that. I think when they did that thing on Friday, it would have been nice, like they stated, one individual, if it would have been also had a translator in Spanish. Because believe it or not, we have a lot of Spanish-speaking people in Harlingen. So they got, kind of felt left out. So that's all I have. I gotta do what I do. But thank you very much for your time, and you all have a good evening. Keep working and doing the best you can with what you got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Item number 10.
At this time, we will close the public hearing.
Item number 10, action items. City Commission will discuss, consider, and take any action deemed necessary on items listed in this section, including the adoption of a resolution or an ordinance. 10A, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit SUP request to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for a, for on-premises consumption in a general GR district located at the Stripes Convenience Store, located at 1610 South F Street, bearing a legal description of Block 1, Williamson Subdivision, applicant Tim Biola, or some.
It's close enough.
Make a motion?
In care of 11, I mean, okay, so go ahead, 7-11?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve.
Before we, yeah, I, I'd like to hear the presentation.
Yes. Mayor City Commission, good evening. So we, this is the brand-new Stripe Store located on, at the corner of F and the Expressway 8377. This store has been open for a few months now. And they're proposing to sell alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption. They're already doing this in other stores in the valley, two in FAR, one in Edinburgh, one in Mission, and one in South Padre Island. So this is a, propose, their, their first attempt to do this in a store here in, in Harlingen. And these are the drinks that they're proposing to, to sell for on-premise consumption at the store. So when you're having your lunch, you could have this drink if, if desired, or you can take it to go.
Do they already sell beer?
Yes, for, for on-premise.
So it would only be limited to these three drinks?
Does it propose, yes, to sell these margarita products for on-site if desired with your lunch or to take it to go, to drink at your house?
And so is there a limit on how many drinks that can be purchased and consumed at the store?
So the servers are supposed to be licensed by TA, trained, you know, trained and licensed by, by TABC. They do card you if you want to purchase this drink. They, they do require you to show your, your ID. So they, they have to go through that process as required by TABC.
So will there be a limit in consumption? Can I go to the Stripes or the, I'm sorry, the 7-11 and have two margaritas, three margaritas?
I, I believe that they're trained that if you're intoxicated, that they're not, you're not supposed to sell anymore.
So the same as like at a, at a restaurant or at a bar?
Correct.
And when you say that, that they'll have these with their lunch, they can still have them without food and just be at the location and consume the alcohol there?
Just potentially, yes.
Okay. And is there a reason why they have to have the, the consumption on-premise and it can't just be a to-go?
That's, that's what the company is, is desiring, I guess, to make this, this product profitable, to be able to sell it for on-premise consumption, but also to be able to sell it to, to, for them to go. So they have these machines that they install, and they're in, where the, where the server is for the food, that's where the machine is. So the machine is not where your other fountain drink machines are. They're, they're secluded from the public. So then you have to place an order for the, for the margarita, and the, the server then cards, cards you and then sells you the, the drink.
So there's gonna be more employees aside from the person that generally rings you up that won't be the same person?
No, it's, it's the same employees that work for the store. So they're trained and licensed to, to do this sale.
So I'm concerned, and I know the commission were inclined to, to move forward with it, but Commissioner Morales, this is in your, in your district. And my concern is that there, there is a lot of folks, there's a lot of people in that area of town, there's a lot of people that walk through there and hang out at the store sometimes. And I don't know if this is going to turn into a hangout at 7-11 where it's being, you know, people are there it's being, you know, people are there the same way that they would be at a restaurant or at a bar. And what is that going to do for the neighborhood? And the other issue I have, and I did, I reached out to HPD today and I learned that a couple of years past, there was a fatality there, DWI. Someone got hit walking to that, saying when the store was on the other side of the street. So these other stores that have opened, is this recent or is it, has it been a while that they've been open in the rest of the region?
I think a year or two, yes.
And have there been any studies to see if that increases the DWI rates within the community at all?
No, no. But I do believe that the Assistant Police Chief reached out to the police chiefs in these other communities and after that, he reported no objections.
Our?
Yes, our Assistant Police Chief reached out to the police chiefs in these other communities for their feedback on this. And after that, they reported to the Department and zoning commission that they had no objection.
No objections, meaning that, is there any data to see if that has increased the number of folks driving while intoxicated or that we just don't have any information yet? Or what did they, what?
I really don't know. They just, all I know is that he reached out to those chiefs and then when we had the meeting last week, the deputy chiefs just said that the department has no objections, but no figures, no data, no, nothing like that.
So I have some questions for the chief. I did have some constituents that reached out and had some concerns of drinking while driving. And the concern is the consumption at the store and that it could potentially increase in that area of town where there, according to some residents, there's already a problem. So is there, do we have any, do we have any data to support those concerns that there's an issue in that section of town with driving while intoxicated arrests?
No, I haven't got any data to show that. And I know the incident you were talking about where there was a fatality there, an auto pedestrian fatality that is just up the street from there. But, so, in that specific area, I don't have any data though to show it would increase or cause any other issues than, say, any other bar that opened up.
Do you share any concerns that there be consumption at the convenience store?
In not that I know of. I know when, I think it was the deputy chief that reached out to the other cities that already have these, they just said they haven't had any issues with them. There wasn't any data or anything supporting that. And I think the reason, going back to the, why there has to be an on-premise consumption is the way it's served. It's basically in an open cup, not like, you know, beer that's already sealed. So I think that's the reason for the on-premise consumption. But this would also cause us to have regular checks of the store, especially during the evening hours, to see if we do have people hanging out there just to drink.
So if we do it at this store and then other stores in our community, we would have to afford them the same opportunity. And so if you have all of the Seven-Elevens or Stripes or all the convenience stores in town with onsite consumption, do you think that would be an issue for our community?
I don't think it'd be really any different than what's happened since COVID because it was during COVID when restaurants were closed and you could order and actually order alcoholic drinks and that's when the law changed. So that's basically what they're using is that same law.
And I think that's a great idea because those are sealed and they're taking them, taking them home. My issue, I think, with this is the onsite consumption at the convenience stores. And, you know, you've got on Tyler and Harrison, every time I drive home, there's, you know, people congregating outside of the convenience store. And so how are you going to determine who is allowed to, you know, continue to be served? I just, I don't, there's no limitation. You can go in there and have three margaritas if that's your tolerance or if you don't look intoxicated. And then the open carry, if someone is served, there's going to be someone there to make sure that they don't leave with half of their drink. Is that, is that part of?
My understanding is they could walk out with half a drink.
Right. And then get in their car and drive down the street and potentially hit someone or kill someone. I just, I think that the commission should really consider the long-term effects on our community if other convenience stores also have the same business, business plan. Those are my thoughts. But we don't have any, do we have any data from DWIs if they went up or down during COVID while there was the drive-through?
I could get those numbers. I don't have them handy for me.
Thank you, chief. I know, and I didn't give you a heads up, so my apologies. Thank you, though. Did you have any questions, Commissioner?
Yeah, one. What time are they going to be selling these margaritas? Five to AM?
On the hours of operation, they put five AM to five PM every day.
They're not going to be selling this at six o'clock in the morning, are they?
No, it's the hours of operation for the food, the food component of the company. So that's what they put. The Laredo Taco Company, that's when they're open.
So basically, this would shut down at eight?
Yes.
The margaritas?
Yes. Yes, every day, five AM to eight PM.
No, okay. The taco, Laredo Taco is open from five AM to eight PM?
Correct.
All right. What time are they gonna stop serving the margaritas?
At eight.
At eight?
Eight PM.
So basically, if all goes well, they'll start having these during lunch. Go there for lunch, grab a taco or whatever, drink one, take off, and maybe afterward, pick up another one. But it'll be over with by eight PM?
Correct.
Okay. All right, now it comes. So it's not going to be open till ten and midnight. So with the fact that, what I'm listening, what I read and I picked up on, the other police chiefs don't have an issue. Now, the biggest question that I have, will this open the door for other Laredo tacos to have the same situation?
For sure.
Now, I'm asking, I'm answering that myself in this regard. This is where the chief, the mayor, and everybody else can ask the same question. Maybe I'm right and maybe I'm wrong. I do realize this, it's a new location and it's not going to have so much foot traffic as people driving to and from. In other words, there's other locations of Laredos that have the taco, the Laredo taco, and I know there's plenty of issues. Okay? So I, I would imagine if there's issues at those locations, they're not going to open it up to have a special use permit to sell margaritas. I think that's only logical. They're looking for the sale. Otherwise, they would have opened this up for everybody in town. So I'm thinking I'm going to give this gentleman the, or the benefit of the doubt that they'll be able to, to make it work to where it's not going to be a nuisance to everybody.
I would just say, as a commission, if you do for one, you got to do for all. You can't pick and choose. And so I think any potential convenience store that has this component, or really any store that sells tacos and has its own little restaurant, would be able to get this type of, they could come to the city, request an SUP, and then if you deny it, then they would say, well, why, why is it okay over there and why not over here? The planning and zoning, they're going to follow the precedent that this commission provides them. Is that accurate? And I think people, you know, there's drinking and driving accidents that happen at all times of the day. There's a lot of them that happen at five in the morning as well. So I don't think that that makes a difference. But those are just, just my concerns. But is there any other discussion? Do you have any? All right. Do you have any questions? Thank you, Javier. Is there a motion?
I'll do it. Here, you made one.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Javier.
Item ten B, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve An-
Mayor, we need to read the caption.
Well, they have to read the caption, right?
No, it's an ordinance.
Yes. An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen, a special use permit issued to Seven-Eleven Inc. to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption in a general retail district located at Sixteen Ten South F Street Bearing a legal description of Block One Williams Subdivision Providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, item B, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve An Ordnance on First Reading for a Special Use Permit, SUP Request to Allow an Adult Business Microblading Studio in a General Retail GR District Located at Twenty-Two Twenty-Two South Expressway Eighty-Three, Suite Five Oh Eight Bearing a Legal Description of One Point Nine Five Six Acres of Three Point Three Zero Acres, Part West of Ten Thirty-Four, Lot AN-Dash-One, Block Twenty-Four, Lancy Hill Subdivision, Applicant Daisy Nieto.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just, I would like to make a quick amendment. I'm gonna make a motion. You want to read it first and then I'll make my quick motion?
All right. In ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen, a special use permit issued to Daisy Nieto to allow an adult business microblading studio in a general retail GR district located at Twenty-Two Twenty-Two South Expressway Eighty-Three, Suite Five Oh Eight, and Bearing a Legal Description of Nineteen Fifty-Six, One Point Nine Five Six Acres of a Three Point Three Acre Part West, Ten Point Three Four, Ten Point Three Four, Lot AN-Dash-One, Block Twenty-Four, Lancy Hill Subdivision.
I'll make a motion to approve with an amendment. I know the start time's at eight AM, right? Just move it up to six AM. That's it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve An Ordnance on First Reading for a Rezoning Request from Residential Single Family R1 District to Residential Duplex R2 District for a Property Located at One Oh Two North Twenty-Seven Street Bearing a Legal Description of Lot Eight, Block C, Hunter Subdivision Number One, Applicant Mark Haller.
Is there any discussion?
No.
Mark?
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen, rezoning from residential single-family R1 District to residential duplex R2 District for a property located at One Oh Two North Twenty-Seven Street Bearing a Legal Description of Lot Eight, Block C, Hunter Subdivision Number One, Applicant Mark Haller.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number D, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve An Ordnance on First Reading for a Rezoning Request from Residential Single Family R1 District to Plan Development District PD to Allow Thirty-Two Feet Wide Streets with Fifty Feet of Right-of-Way, One Cul-de-sac to Serve Twenty-Eight Lots, and Smaller Lot Sizes for Lots One Fifteen Through Nineteen, Twenty-One Through Thirty-Three, and Thirty-Six To Forty-Eight, for a Proposed Eighty-Lot Single Family Development on a Property Bearing a Legal Description of Fifteen Point Seven Six Acres Track Out of Land Being All of Block Four and a Part or Portion of Blocks Three, Five, and Block Seventeen Stewart Place Subdivision Located along the west side of South Palm Boulevard Approximately Four Hundred and Eighty Feet South of Business Eighty-Three, Applicant Javier Nohosa, Inc. of Jason E. Garza.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Is this going to affect any issues with the wastewater and water consumption and use in that area?
Harlingen Waterworks approved the subdivision. They have some conditions, but they have full approval from Harlingen Waterworks for water and sewer. It's been approved for drainage by the city engineer and the drainage district. They got all the approvals and they're already very eager to start this subdivision.
All right.
And also park fees. We're getting park fees.
All right.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen, rezoning from residential single-family R1 to Plan Development District to Allow Thirty-Two Feet Wide Streets with Fifty Feet Right-of-Way, One Cul-de-sac to Serve Twenty-Eight Lots, and Smaller Lot Sizes for Lot One Fifteen Nineteen, Twenty-One Thirty-Three, and Thirty-Six Forty-Eight, for an Eighty-Lot Single Family Development on a property bearing a legal description of Fifteen Point Seven Six Acres Track of Land Being All of Block Four and a Part or Portion of Blocks Three, Five, and Block Seventeen Stewart Place Subdivision Located on the west side of South Palm Boulevard Approximately Four Hundred and Eighty Feet South of Business Highway Eighty-Three Providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And there go your dreams, Renee. And I'm the one that told them about the property. I feel bad about it.
One day.
There was something to wish upon a star.
Yeah. I'll get my park one day.
Yes, sir.
Item B, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve An Ordnance on First Reading to Abandon and Vacate a Twenty-Foot Drainage Eastman Being a Zero Point One One Five Acre Track of Land Out of Lot One, Block One, Caps Edition Located Along the West Side of Loop Four Eighty-Nine Approximately Seven Hundred and Twenty-Five Feet North of Harrison Avenue, Applicant Santiago Espinoza.
Is there any discussion? Mark, will you read the caption?
An ordinance abetting the twenty-foot drainage eastman being a Zero Point One One Five Acre of Lot One, Block One, Caps Edition Located on the west side of Loop Four Eighty-Nine, approximately Seven Hundred Twenty-Five Feet North of Harrison Avenue.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Javier. Phenomenal work.
Great job.
Item F, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve An Ordnance on First Reading Regarding Water and Sewer Rate Adjustments to Provide For Forecaster Operating Expenses, Capital Asset Costs, and Funding of Harlingen Waterworks System Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. We've talked about our proposed rate plan. On March twenty-seventh, the Utility Board Trustees of Harlingen Waterworks System approved a rate plan corresponding to the on-time inverted block higher base rate scenario that was last discussed at the February twenty-sixth joint meeting between the board and the city commission. This is the one page that was presented to the Utility Board Trustees. The, there is one clarification that really should be made here, and it pertains to the note here at the bottom. What is presented are inside-city limit rates on this page. The footnote talks about outside-city limit rates being at one hundred and fifty percent of the inside-city limits. There is a clarification that I would make. We also did submit an ordinance that I did not, I guess, get into the packet. I just found out about that. On the last page, we do have some rates on the base rate side for sewer outside-city limits that are currently higher than the one hundred and fifty percent. And so the recommendation has been, rather than reducing the rates for outside-city limit customers, we would like to freeze those rates. And that is represented here. So for the first three years, the small five-eighths inch meter on sewer base charge would remain at twenty dollars and fifty cents. The one-inch meter currently also at twenty dollars and fifty cents would remain frozen for that first year. The goal is that by the end of the phase-in of the rate plan, actually starting in twenty twenty-seven, all of the outside-city limit rates would be purely and exactly one hundred and fifty percent of what the inside city, city limit rates would be. That is a very defensible position when it, when it comes to the Public Utility Commission. There are principles in AWWA that establish that that is a very justifiable cost. There are cases that go before the PUC. Adopting this type of plan at that one hundred and fifty percent level ensures that we do have a very defensible plan. We do have our rate consultant with us today if there's any questions about that that come up. So that is the only clarification that we would make in the ordinance that we submitted. It's not precisely stated on this sheet here, but it does pertain to the base rates for outside-city limit rate for small meters and the one-inch meter. That's a clarification that's important to make. It is also important to note that this plan does not include any discounts for any subclasses of residential customers. There was a significant discussion held at the board meeting talking about different assistance programs that are available to low-income customers, the K-COS program that we've been participating in to the tune of over, I believe, a hundred thousand dollars since we started that program in twenty twenty- since we started that program in 2022. Housing Authority actually does help pay deposits for their qualifying customers. Lowe's and Fishes has assistance that they also help customers with. Queen of Peace Church will also help their, I get people within their district or within their area with bills and also the Comprehensive Energy Assistance Program, which helps with power bills. So there, we discussed a number of programs that are already available. It was the board's decision to approve a plan without the discounts for any of the subclasses of residential customers. So that is the rate plan that is presented here and was submitted in the ordinance. Be happy to answer any questions about those. I know there were some questions that had come up about other assistance programs, but this is what our board has given us to present to the commission for consideration and approval.
Did you discuss with your board just to do the initial lifeline rate for the Housing Authority folks only? I know that there was concern that, I read what you sent, that the vast majority of the population would have some kind of discount, what was presented to you or with the guidance that you were given by the commission. But the initial request for just the Housing Authority recipients, was that presented so that could be put to a vote to your board?
That is what we did present. So this is not the exact version of what we presented. We did present the one that included a $25 discount for Housing Authority, approximately 1,000 customers. And after the discussion that was held, the board felt that they wanted to proceed without that discount. And so that's purely what I'm here to present today. If the commission wishes to take a different direction on that, I understand that the commission has latitude to do that.
You're talking about like the Texas Utility Help program and the Help for Texas program, which is both statewide and local programs that help people pay for their water bills, correct?
Right.
I did a quick Google search. I found a bunch of programs helping pay your water bill.
Well, that is, so I just kind of, and I get that, but I want to put things in perspective. These folks go and they ask for assistance on their water bill. They go maybe one time, two times, maybe three times. It's not assistance that's going to subsidize their bill for the next five years. So these organizations aren't really going to help individuals long-term. It's if they are unable to pay their bill because maybe, you know, their electricity bill was much higher in the summer, or they had, I don't know, an injury or medical bills. And so that's what those organizations are designed for. Isn't that accurate?
All the details on those programs and the level of assistance that they have, I can't speak definitively about them. I do know that there are a number of programs that we do connect customers with when they come in for assistance, so. Whether Lowe's and Fishes would continue to help someone with their bill for an indefinite period of time or not, I do not precisely know the answer to that question. And that would be a very similar response to some of these others. I don't know all the details. I do know that K-Cost can potentially continue to assist customers who find themselves in a delinquent state of payment, who need assistance. There are no limitations on that program, from what I understand. But as for the others, we don't, we connect them with those entities we don't manage and keep a library of all the details of those assistance programs.
So that wasn't taken into consideration when they voted on, based on these organizations helping, whether they knew how they were gonna be able to help, just that they exist?
Well, that they exist. Right. We did not get into a full discussion of all the details of all the assistance that those different entities provide.
I'm just concerned because the bills are going to go up a considerable amount. It's different if it was just a few dollars, but we're talking about nearly double the amount by 2028. And if we can help, I think Commissioner Betta said at the last meeting, if we can help some people, why wouldn't we at least do that? If we can't, you know, reach everyone that we would like to reach, if we can do something, it's a drop in the bucket, the savings, to the individual customer. It's not going to impact your ability to make the improvements that you need to make if you help these 1,000 customers. Another thing to consider, if it's not wanting to assist just the Housing Authority, was there an option to maybe just folks that are on social security? Or, I mean, if there's another demographic that you would feel most, or the commission would feel more appropriate, I just didn't hear any conversation about that other than, you know, let's add every demographic. I think that you mentioned, Mike, you know, wanna help everybody. But if we can't, we can't. It's not feasible. But it doesn't make sense for us to say, well, since we can't give it to everyone, we're just not gonna give it to anybody at all.
Most of those programs that were mentioned, again, I'm speaking from experience from decades ago, because I grew up in housing in Los Vasinos. And I know when my mother had to go get some help from these programs, you know, we'd go walking to go get some help from these programs. And it wouldn't be like a continuous thing. They would help her, like the one month they would help her, because kind of like Norma said, you know, the light bill was too high, so they helped her with the water bill, and it was just that one month. So it wasn't a continuous thing. So I would like, if we can help these people in housing, you know, like I said, I grew up in housing. I know how the families struggle. I know my mom struggled when she, when we lived there in Los Vasinos. So if we can help them a little bit, I think we should do it. It's better to help some than none.
The issue is that other people are having to pick up that tab. And so the rest of us are paying for those 1,000. Not only are we paying for that 1,000 in water, we're also paying for their housing, or we're supplementing their housing. We're supplementing their Wi-Fi. We're supplementing like their power bills. So I appreciate, I appreciate your point. I know we've had the conversation. Just, that's the counter view.
So the thing is, this is the most vulnerable population of our community, and we, they deserve to have a voice on this commission. And they, we want them to be able to transition out of housing. And the way we do that is that we don't give them additional bills that are going to further financially burden them so that they're stuck in housing. And yes, you know, there is assistance, but it's based on their income, so it's not all the same. And the idea right now is that the Housing Authority is doing an amazing job, and people are transitioning now. They have, on average, between four to five years that they are in the system, if you will. And so if they're given a discount, it's not going to be forever. It's going to be while they're in this situation where they are struggling to get out of the situation that they're in. And so if we give them this increase, you know, they're not going to, I mean, that might very well mean that there's no food on the table because they've got a higher bill. And if that means that I have to pay a little bit more, then I'm okay with that. And I think that we should consider it because, as I mentioned, at the end of the day, what was it? How much was it going to cost?
I would direct to...
But the, if you were to do the 1,000, it was, the 1,000 recipients would lose how much revenue for Harlingen Water Works? You had a figure.
But they don't lose it because they collect it from the rest of us. So there is no loss.
Correct, but...
The direction given was $25 on each bill, flat rate, for 1,000 customers. So that's $25,000 per month.
Spread out over, like, how much more exactly is it? If my bill's gonna go up a quarter or 50 cents because they're getting a discount? That's what I'd like to know.
Right. I would direct your attention to this slide. And this is based off of the complete rate plan. What we presented at the last city commission meeting was an estimate of what those were going to be. This does not, because it depends on how much consumption you're talking about. And we could pick a 5,000-gallon use case, which is what I did in that analysis. This here is pointing out that for that $25, there is a contribution in terms of the water commodity rate. This is inside-city limits. This is outside-city limits. So 5 cents per 1,000. If you use 5,000 gallons, that's going to be a 25-cent addition to all the other residential customers. Just in the 0-3,000 block, not all the other blocks. On the sewer side, that impact, because our base rates are a bit lower on sewer, a decision was made to reflect that change or the increase in terms of the base rates to others. And so depending on meter size, you might have a 15-cent increase if you've got a 5/8 inch meter, 77 cents by 2028. But the bigger the meter size, of course, the bigger that component that other customer is going to have to pitch in to make up for that difference. So this is the most accurate data that we have about this. We didn't build a specific use case to say, well, is it 5,000-gallon customer? What does that mean? But I think you can appreciate this by multiplying that 5 cents by a 5,000-gallon consumption or a 10,000-gallon consumption. So that, this is the best analysis that we can give, and we can certainly run some more scenarios on it.
So basically 5 cents, or...
Well, it would be 15 cents on the water side. It would be...
So a quarter.
21 cents on the outside-city limits. It's a little bit bigger on the wastewater side, so on the order of 77 cents on a base rate increase in 2028. That's for your average customer. About 90% of our customers have those 5/8 inch meters. So that is really probably your best indicator, plus the amount that's shown there on the water side. It's a combination of both the water and the sewer. So roughly by 2028, about a dollar. Maybe that's the best way to say it. So I'm simply presenting what our board approved. I'm not an advocate. I can't defend or challenge.
And I completely understand. And I'm just saying that, you know, if it's gonna cost you every, you know, if the bills for the rest of the community, as Commissioners mentioned, that, you know, okay, if you're not, they're not paying it here, someone's paying it over here, that difference is a quarter. It's 25 cents. It's a dollar in the next, by the time we get to 2028. Shouldn't we be protecting the people that we, that look to this commission to ensure that they can continue to pay their bills and to transition out of the Housing Authority? So that way, that space, that house, that, you know, resident is available for someone else that is in need. And instead, we may continue to have folks that stay in housing because they're unable to pay their bills. So, I mean, that's, that's just a, it doesn't seem like a big cost to bear to help that population. Those are my concerns.
If I may. I know that we're pretty aggressive on going with the on-time, but we should consider going with a moderate delay. And that would reduce how much everybody pays across the board. Now, the discounts that they can get, whether it's 1,000 people, or two, or three, we have to keep in mind that not, it hasn't been three years. In this city, some of the employees barely made the $10,000 per hour that they were getting. So we also have to keep in mind that we're gonna have a large portion of the population that's barely over 10. And I can assure you that there's gonna be people that work for the city that have been here for years, that have only gotten a 25 to a 50 cent raise. My problem is not the 1,000. My problem, my concern, is these people that are, whether it's 10%, or 20, or 30%, they're struggling to make it work right now. Okay? And if you double the rates in five years, or triple in some cases, we're gonna put a major hurt on them. Okay? So I'm asking this commission to think twice. Now, I'm not just giving you scenarios. I'm gonna also provide you with two options. One, consider the moderate delay. He can come back in two weeks and give us those numbers. All right? That's one option. The other option is to go with this on-time that we're very aggressive on for the five years. But at year three, in 2026, we go back and review everything and see if the construction is there that we said was gonna be there. All right? If the construction is so far behind, there's no need to charge plenty or double how much we're requesting for the Harlingen Water Works. Okay? We also have to keep in mind that we have to be very aggressive. And I'm not referring to you. I'm referring to all of us. And making sure that you get the funding. Because it's not just you, it's the stakeholders, it's the same people that pay our taxes. Okay? So we need to be very cognizant of that and make sure that we're extremely aggressive. Okay? We cannot leave any stone unturned. This needs to be addressed. Yes, it's been, the can's been kicked for decades. We're gonna tackle this. But we can't hurt ourselves and shoot ourselves in the foot. And then two years later, we're doing the same thing on the other foot. We gotta make sure that we make some right decisions. So, gentlemen?
Yeah. The things that Commissioner Morales is bringing up on the review and so on, that was already built into this, wasn't it? If I remember correctly, and if additional money from grants and so on became available, that at any point in this process, we could hit pause, review.
That's correct. The extent to which we have success with Water Development Board financing beyond the initial assumptions, which were very modest and built into the rate plan, then those will help reduce those future-year adjustments. One of the natural things that's going to happen, we come to the city commission every year, August, September, with a proposed budget. I think that's the perfect opportunity to talk about the progress, what the status is with our Water Development Board applications. Environmental reviews can hold you up if you've got a certain project. There are, the timeline is largely under Water Works' control, but there are elements of projects, particularly those that we're applying for funding, where the Water Development Board might have a process that says, well, we're not going to approve that just yet. We're gonna have to let things play out. And to the extent that that happens, I think we can report to the commission during our annual budget process what the status of those projects are. And if we are in a position to continue with the five-year plan, then we would recommend that. If we're in a position to say, we should tune that back or perhaps even take a year off, depending on project schedules and so forth, that is a very natural part and possibility. And I would propose that we would do that. So it may not be that the five-year plan is implemented exactly with the timing that is indicated. But there'll certainly be a review, whether it be because of some delays outside of our control or because of success. We've got grants that are being applied. A $10 million grant toward a specific project would have a non-negligible effect on the rate adjustment that would be required for that next cycle. So that is something that we would propose to do coming to the city commission starting even in 2025. We're not gonna have a whole lot of information by the time we get to August of this year, but by 2025, that can be certainly a report that's included with our budget presentation.
Yeah, I do, I recall you mentioning that. And I, you know, urge the commission, my concerns were just on the lifeline, but I do think that we made the right call in doing the on-time because of the fact that, you know, we've spoken about this ad nauseam, that inflation and it's just gonna cost us more in the long run, and we need to really get this done. And I will say that before I came on board, and I'm not sure on the, well, half of us are rather recent, but in my first conversations with you is when I learned that for decades, there had never been a request from the Texas Water Development Board. And so this commission has been very aggressive and working in connection with Tim and the board to make sure that we're going after these monies, and that's why we were successful. That's why the Texas Water Development Board sat here on this dais and held their meeting and granted us $10 million. And so I think we're gonna continue on those efforts. We can't worry about the things that didn't happen in the past. We gotta focus on the future and move forward and get this done. I would think that potentially, you know, given that this is a significant increase, you might consider having quarterly updates on what it is that you're doing, whether that's an email to Gabe where he can provide it to the commission or if you, you know, wanna be, wanna present, but just keeping us up to date on what it is that's going on and that we're on track. I think that this is going to benefit the Harlingen residents for generations and generations to come. It's something that needs to be done. We have to make the hard decisions. And so I think Commissioner Morales, you were right on track about wanting to make sure and be accountable and doing the on-time. sure and be accountable and doing the on-time. My only suggestion is that we adopt the on-time, but that you make an exception and you carve out the lifeline for the Housing Authority.
I want to make, oh, do we need to read the ordinance?
Yes. In ordinance of the City of Harlingen, Texas, amending Chapter 18 and Chapter 48, Sections 4897 and 48185 of the Harlingen City Code as amended to amend rates for water and sewer service, establishing an effective date in providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance as proposed by the Harlingen Water Works.
With or without the lifeline?
Without the lifeline, as of.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion fails. Is there another motion?
I make a motion to approve the, the water rates with the lifeline.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Wait, Frank, you're opposed?
Opposed.
You're opposed.
It failed.
Okay, so both failed.
See, here's the thing.
I think that, let me just, some clarifications here. If I heard you right, Commissioner Morales, then you suggested that we do either the moderate delay or adopt the on-time and make sure that along the way, that we are holding Tim and his team accountable, and in addition to that, going after the grants that we are going to go after, and then making sure that we make the adjustments along the way. And so that is what the commission is trying to adopt.
I just want to remind everybody that three, within the past three years, our city employees, some of them went past a threshold of $10 an hour. Okay? And with that being said, we have to keep in mind that those people right now are still struggling. Those employees, that's our employees. Now, you stop and think about those employees, and then look at the public, the, the rest of the population, it's significant, whether it's 30, 40%. So those people are going to struggle with, with the, with the on-time. Okay? Not everybody's going to get a discount. Okay? And it's going to hurt them. That's my number one concern.
The thing is, it's going to be more expensive later on, Frank. And if we kick, we, remember, you and I are real big on not, on trying to fix some of the mistakes in the past, and we don't want to kick the can.
But, but how, how badly do we want to be? How, how aggressive do we want to be? Okay? Now, we're going to hurt a lot of people. Okay? The churches and, and all these groups are not going to give them help for a year, or two years, or three years. As for a few months, and that's it. Their resources, their resources will expire.
So Commissioner, I think what our job is, as a commission, is to ensure that we are doing our part with our delegation and talking with the Water Development Board and trying to get as much money to our part of the region as possible. And, and those are, you know, that's, that's something that I take very serious, and I know everybody else on the commission does, and that's what we, we, that is how we do our part to try to lessen the blow, because that's what this is. But the reality is, as it's been mentioned before, that it has to get done. It has to get done. We don't have many options in front of us. If we want to reduce, we want to reduce the cost, but then that cost is just going to be increased in years to come, which is going to, in the long run, Tim is going to come back and ask for these rates to go up even higher because of inflation.
I understand that. But keep in mind that it's been 10 to 12 years since there's been a rate increase. So right now, whether we like it or not, we are taking a step in the right direction to where rates are going to increase. Okay? That's my point. Now, are you just basically suggesting giving this 1,000 people a $25 discount? Is that what you're asking for?
My proposal is, because remember, th- these are going to be from the Housing Authority, and your district is District 4. You have my old neighborhood, Los Vecinos. You have Bonito Park and Robin Hood Apartments, they're still housing as well, for the ones off F Street. So from all the districts, you got, you have the most housing, so you have the most people that will be benefiting from this lifeline. And these are the people that you're concerned about the most.
Yes, I am concerned about them. Okay? I really am. But also, I'm, I'm really torn with the 30, 40% that are just making it, and they're not going to fall into 1,000 people. Okay? They don't live at Los Vecinos. They don't live at Robin Hood.
Correct.
Okay? So those people are going to be hurting just as badly.
But the thing is, I agree with you. But the thing is, well, I'm, the way I'm seeing it is that the rates are going to have to go up either way. We're going to be voting for the rates to go up. I, I, I think it's the, the consensus here that we are going to be increasing the rates. So I would rather, which I'm fine with, because I know that's what needs to be done for our city, that's, that's the best decision for our city. But what I want to do is, I want to be able to help at least some of the people. We cannot, I don't believe in just saying, oh, we're not going to help anybody because we can't help everybody. No, if we can help at least some of them, let's help those people that we can help. And those people that we can't help are the people that are in these areas, a lot of them are in your district and, and Ford's district and other districts. If we can help them, let's help them. But don't let the reason that we can't help everybody be the reason we don't help the few that we can.
But we help those to the detriment of others.
But that, but that could go to anything, like pilgrims.
That's the reality of it. We help those to the detriment of the others. So those ones that you are concerned about, the ones that are not in the Housing, the Housing Authority, those are the ones that are going to be hurt a little more.
I don't, I don't think they're necessarily hurt. I think they're just contributing to the society. It's like we, the people of the United States. It's like the streets, like, I have some people in my district that say, you know what, I pay property taxes, and why are you fixing those other streets? Why don't you get to my streets? Okay? It's the same thing, just because you're paying taxes, but you're not just paying for the, for what's in front of you, you're paying for, for all, for everyone else. It's the same thing. These people are the ones that need it the most. I, I know how they struggle, they need the help.
It'd be much different, Daniel, if it was, you know, we're, we're tacking on $20 to their bill, or double their bill, or $10, but we're talking about a quarter in, in year one. I, I don't see, I don't see how that is really, you know, taken from one to give to the other in the, in, in the way that it's being, being presented.
Well, I appreciate that.
It's a small popu, it's a small population. We'd like to do more, and I know that the commission as a whole wanted to do that, but Tim has told us that that's not possible, because then it would not fund the projects that he needs to fund. So we can't do that. So then, because we cannot help everyone, we're not going to help anyone, just doesn't make any, any sense. I think we have a responsibility to, to this, to, to, to help whoever it is that we can. And at this, and in this situation, this is what we can do. Sometimes we have to make compromises, and we have to, to provide where we can and to be able to continue to do the work that we need to do for the greater community, which is the improvements that need to get done.
If I may say, I'll repeat myself from previous meetings. You're picking and choosing your poor people that you love and the ones you don't.
Exactly.
And you have to treat everybody equally. If you're going to establish classes of people, you have to treat them all equally. And then the people who don't live in, I don't know, with, with public housing, there's going to be lines of people waiting to get into public housing because, hey, it's cheaper to live there, my water and sewer bill is cheaper. And it's no incentive to get people out of public housing. You're, it's, then the other thing is, we delay this month after month after month, and Wilden Group says, we've had all these meetings with Wilden Group, they're professionals, and they say, this is how you got to do it. And here we are, delaying it again for another month and month, and all that does is drive up the costs. Because in inflation, as was first presented, inflation in the construction industry, in the water and sewer industry is not 2% or 3% or 5%, but it's in double, double digits, and it's not going to get better. And as we delay all this, you're increasing the costs to the taxpayer.
Yeah, we're looking, Mayor, I appreciate your position, but you're looking at 25 cents in a vacuum. It's not 25 cents, it's 25 cents on top of what we're paying for housing, on top of what we're paying for their Wi-Fi, on top of what we're paying for all the other things. So for you, you see 25 cents, but I'm seeing the hundreds of dollars, the thousands of dollars that we're paying every year on top of it. And that's my concern. What I feel that this is, is it's not a water issue, it's a lack of employment issue. This is an economic development issue. What we need to be doing is that the reason these people are struggling with bills or whatnot is that they don't have the jobs, they're not being upskilled, they're not being put in the best position to succeed. So do we think that helping them, by giving them a discount on water is the best way to help them? Or should we be doing a different approach, where we try to help them get the better jobs, where we try to help them get license, free licensure through programs out there, free certi, free certifications, so they can get better jobs, so that they don't have to live in housing? That's where, if we're going to do anything, if our effort's going to be anywhere, it should be there. Talking to, talking to Orlando coming in, right, there's a bunch of programs out there, free programs. How much money do we give to VITA? Right? We gave money to VITA recently. We gave money, the minutes from, the ones we just approved, we gave minutes to TSDC for their goal line, to help them pay for, help these kids get their certifications. Those are the paths we should be taking, not giving them discounts on water.
I, I think what you're saying is absolutely right. There's a lot of programs out there, and that's the, that's a really good approach to go like the big picture, that we need to get them jobs and all that. I totally agree with you on that. But the thing is, tell that to the family that can't afford their water bill, it's going to get shut off. Okay? Tell that to my mom, who was working, that couldn't work because she was a disabled, single mom, and she had a little kid that was a pain in the butt, called Rainey, and she couldn't work, and she was going to get her water cut off, and she needed help. That's what these, that's what we're trying to do here, that's what, how I'm seeing it. I'm saying these $25 may not seem a lot to some people, but to the, to the people there in the, in the, in the housing, it means a lot. And I hear you're saying a quarter here, Wi-Fi here, you're assuming we're paying for their Wi-Fi, you're assuming we're paying for all these other things. I mean, Mike is always telling us about how Jesus does this, Jesus does that, and he's always going to the Bible. What I'm saying right here, what does Jesus say to help the most vulnerable people? And these are the people that we're trying to help. We're trying to help the most vulnerable people in our society, or in our city, that's what we're trying to do.
But we are helping them because they're living in housing. So it's not some just random belief that applies.
So Jesus said, just to help them a little bit and let them, and turn the other cheek?
We're helping them a lot, I believe. And the, the issue is this, this is the land of opportunity, not the land of handouts.
It's not a handup, it's a handup.
So, 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 hold on. It, we don't, and, and, and I, and I can fully appreciate your, your perspective on this, but we don't, you don't know everyone that is living in housing and their specific situation. Each person has a different story, and not all of them get free, you know, free rent and free Wi-Fi and, I mean, they, as they are transitioning out of housing, they are paying increased amounts in their rent. That is, that is the goal. And so if you have someone on year three or year four, and they're, and we're setting them up because there are wraparound services in the Housing Authority, they do help them go find jobs, they do have to, there are certain requirements that have to be, to be met in order to continue to have those renewals and, in, in where they're housed. So they are doing those things. Should, could we provide better opportunities? Absolutely. Should we look towards doing that? We should, yes. However, they are, what they're doing right now is working. They are not staying in housing for 10 years, 15 years, 20 years. There is a segment of the population that are disa, that are disabled and elderly that, that potentially may, but that is a small portion. You have folks that, you know, you have single moms, recently divorced, that are, you know, they've got a couple of kids, and, and it's hard for them, so they're, they, they get on this list, and by the time they get into housing, they have a goal of getting out of housing. And, and all I'm saying is that we should, you're, we're disrupting that path by increasing those rates. And, and the only reason why we focus on, on the Housing Authority is because we've already established that it would be really burdensome for staff to, you know, go and do the work, to be able to establish who would qualify and who didn't. And this is something that the City of Harlingen has already done through the Housing Authority, so we don't, we're not concerned whether these folks really meet the criteria, because that's already been done. So I think, you know, we really need to, to consider what everybody is going through individually and not just, you know, make these blanket statements that we're giving handouts to everybody and they just, they just need to go get a better job, because that's just not, not the case.
But that's the, those are the things we're willing to help them do. It's not like saying, go get a better job, it's saying, we're willing to help them do it.
Yeah, absolutely. But are you going to be able to put them in a better job, to be able to pay their bill by next month? It's absolutely impossible for us to do that for everyone, as much as we'd want to. Even if we went over there, held their hand and took them to do the training, it's just not, it's not, not possible, it's not realistic. And so this is a temporary situation for folks, and we even entertain the idea of making sure, and I know that Hilda will be able to, to help with that, to ensure that what we're saying is true, that they are there for a small period, you know, a, a few years, not to exceed the five years. And if they do, then maybe they don't get these discounts, because that's what you're concerned with, and that's what Mike's concerned with, right? That people are just going to, lining up in, in housing because they're going to get, which is ridiculous. Nobody's going to line up in housing just because their water bill is, is, is cheaper. People go into housing because they need the assistance, and we are already providing that.
Probably being, probably the only one that's lived in housing on the commission, I can tell you that living in housing is not something people aspire to do. Okay? I lived there with my mom, and I lived there when I got out, and I'm, I'm out, because you can tell I'm not there anymore. Thankfully, my children are not there, so it's not something that goes, how some people say from generation to generation. These people that live in housing need help. And yes, you're right, they're, they are receiving some help. Yes, they are, they're receiving some help. But what is wrong with helping them some more? I, I don't, I never, I don't see the, the wrong in that. We're just helping them. That's all I, that's how I see it.
Well, so you had two motions, and they both failed, and the, you know, I think.
If I may?
Yes.
Let's, I hate to use the term compromise, but if we can go ahead and help them through 2024 and through 2025 and revisit it again. Okay?
Revisit what? I'm sorry?
The, the assistance. Okay? See, here's, here's a program that people don't realize, and I brought this up to, I can't think of her name right off the bat, Flo. And, and it's very doable. Okay? Anybody that's elderly that has Medicare, Medicare, Medicaid?
Medicaid's for kids, Medicare's for older.
Medicaid.
Medicare, I get it.
Yeah, okay.
Medicaid.
Want to see my card?
No, no.
I aspire to one day. No, I.
At the end of the day, they, there's, there's certain insurances out there that can provide them with a $25 assistance toward their utilities. All right? These are the people that need to sign up, and they can get this. All right? So it doesn't matter if, where they live. Okay? If they fall under the Medicare, Medicaid A and B, or whatever it is, they're eligible. Okay? They're eligible, doesn't matter where they live. They can get that $25 toward, my preference would be to the Harlingen Water Works instead of their, their electricity, their light bill. That would be my preference.
You're saying everybody on Medicare can get that?
Medicaid.
Medicare.
Medicaid.
There's, there's something there, it's, a good chunk of them can, and some people can't. All right? But there's, there's that program out there. Okay? And it doesn't matter if they have United Health, or Cigna, or.
You're talking about the Medicare Advantage plans.
So what are, what are, what is the, what are you saying?
Okay. I would go along with giving them the assistance through 2024 and 2025, and we revisit that when we get our reports and see where we stand on the, on the assessing, the, the construction and the, and the fundings that we've gotten. That would give us two years. Eh, maybe a little bit less. Okay? But that would give us a, a little leeway as to what, where we stand. Are we being successful in getting our grants? Is Texas Water Development Board helping us out? Is the SWIFT program helping us out? Is that other, uh, TDM or, uh, helping us out?
So if, let me just, I wanna make sure I understand. So you want to go with the on-time, with the lifeline and you want to come back in two years to see where Tim is at? And if you, if, if they are not on track, then you're going to remove the lifeline?
It's a sunset provision, that's what he's saying he wants. He wants the lifeline to only last two years and then we can renew it at the end of those two years if it's necessary.
Correct. Now, my preference would be with, to go with a, the moderate delay. That would reduce everybody's cost.
I don't think anyone on the commission is gonna do that.
So I'm up the creek there.
Right, so I'm trying to just kind of narrow the.
So would you support the, the water rates with the lifeline for two years?
For two years.
Or a sunset provision like Daniel said?
Correct. And then revisit that as we get more data. Plenty.
Make that as a motion, brother.
All right.
I would, I would make one clarification is that these, that $25 does not start year one, that is phased in. So by 2028, the benefit becomes 25. One of the things that we heard the commission say was that we didn't really want housing to pay less than they're currently paying, so we phased that through this, through this plan.
That was gonna be my, my, so, sorry, Tim. Just because this two-year sunset provision, in the first two years, there, there's no discount because of the fact that it's not, the rate isn't gonna, if we were to give them a $25 discount, then they would be paying less. And so that isn't the plan.
So that, uh, that lifeline won't, will not kick in till?
Well, it kicks in gradually. So it builds until it gets to 25 by the end of 2028. So by 20, in 2024, 2025, it's going to be something $10 or less. I, I'm just throwing out a number, but it's going to be.
It takes care of the increase, so I don't remember what it was, like $5 or something the first month, um, and then the second month, and not the second month, the first year. And so it, what it was going to do is there would not be an increase. Is that right? And then the second year, it went up a little and so it would cover that up until the 2028. So what it does is for the first two years, if you put a sunset on it, all it's, it's gonna do is their bills will not go up for the next two years. Right?
Something like that. Very close.
You would be at 109% at, on the fifth year for the $3,000 and less. So it would more than double within five years.
Their rates, yes. Yeah, we're, which is, which is why it increases and at the, at the end, when all the rates are at their peak, if you will, that's when the $25.
So perhaps 2026, 2027 is where those customers are still going to be seeing a high rate even though that is still being phased in. By the time you get to 2028, they're getting a $25 benefit, but they're still paying higher than they would have paid in 2024. So that, and it's, it's not saying that it's capping their rate, it's doing that initially, but in those later years, that benefit does not cover the totality of the increase.
So the first two, the first two years, it, they're not gonna see that increase, but then year 27 and 28, they are already, their rates are gonna be increased, but their, this assistance is going to lessen that increase.
So once again, I'm confused. We had multiple meetings with the Water Department and Wilton Group and we all gave our input and have the ability to give our input. And so they said, here's the way to go. And now we're changing the formula for the soup.
Well, no, not necessarily, Mike, because I've been, we've been asking, or at least I've been asking for this since we've been having these, these meetings. But I understand what you're, what you're saying. I think we've established.
We're, we're trying to micromanage what we already could have micromanaged.
Well, I made the present, proposition last time we met, the $25 break, and my position on that has not changed.
And I know that's something that you supported too, Daniel, didn't you? The $25 initially and that was, you and Ford that brought that up last time?
But that was for everyone.
But that was, that would, not for everyone. It was for, there was groups of people that the Texas voters had approved to give constitutional breaks to on the property tax.
But now that it's not feasible, because you know, from the information I got from Tim, it's not feasible. So do you still support the $25 or not?
No, not for, not for those 1,000 people.
So you're gonna just not give anybody?
I would give it to disabled veterans. I'm willing to give it to widows of, uh, veterans who have died in combat.
And also to all veterans, even veterans that are making six figures.
Those disabled, senior disabled.
No, we talked about it because I think that was his direction, all veterans.
You know, and just because you're a disabled veteran does not mean that you're low income. I'm a disabled veteran. I'm not low income.
Yeah, but with the house, the homestead exempt or that exception?
No, no, no. He gets military pay, retired military pay. You said you were disabled. You get monthly pay for whatever your classification and whatever your disability rating.
You do?
I don't get anything. I only served two years.
How dare you?
Yeah, well, they would, it takes me back to Ronald Reagan. It's back to Ronald Reagan.
Hey, one year, two years, 10 years, I appreciate all of it.
But not all veterans need money and need assistance.
That's correct.
And, and I, and I would agree with that.
And you can't make them a privileged class either. You either treat all the poor people equally or not.
But I do see what you're, I think maybe I didn't hear that right because at the last meeting, I thought it was all veterans. But I understand wanting to, to, to assist in, in those classes. I mean, that makes, that makes sense. And if we could, then it, you know, then I, then I would.
I agree, because I agree with you. If it was feasible, like if it was economically feasible, um, to do, help everybody, go for it.
I'd help everybody if I could, but.
So my wife says every time she buys a lottery ticket.
I think I'm gonna start playing and then I will contribute to the City of Harlingen's infrastructure issues. And if I win the lottery, I'll go on record that I will assist with some of the millions that I get.
How much?
I don't know. Depends on how many million. Hey, there's been like billion, billion dollars. If there was a billion dollars, then I would be more than happy to, let's, you know, flip the bill for it. But in all seriousness, Commissioner Morales, having, having heard the discussions on this lifeline, what is your, uh, position? Would you support without the sunset approval, knowing that it's not, um, the $25 right off the, right off the bat?
Right off the bat.
And we would still, I mean, we're gonna do that regardless. We're gonna ensure that there's gonna be accountability and, you know, Tim and I talk and, and, and Gabe is on top of it too. And I would suggest again to have those quarterly reports given to city, city management. You can make them available to the commission. That way you don't have to come all the way out here. But we'd like to know, you know, where you're at. And so when our constituents are asking us questions, we have the answers for them.
And I, I just wanna verify, so everybody here agrees that we're, we are gonna stay on the on-time, correct?
On-time inverted pyramid, correct. Now, the question is that lifeline.
Right.
The discount.
You have the nose, then you have the two-year sunset, then you have the full-time.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't think we could do the two-year sunset from what Tim is telling me, so I.
With the block rate?
Correct.
With the block rate.
So I would say to just do the lifeline and then we can come back to it at the end of the five years and see if we're gonna extend the program or to cancel it.
And this commission has the authority in two years. If you feel like, hey, it's not working and you wanna make some changes, you can do that. But I think that, um, you know, we should, we should get started on it.
Mark, I have a legal question. Could we, could we keep voting on this all night? It's, it's, is there an input?
You can, you can vote again, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
You can't vote again?
No, you know, you can vote again.
Yeah, well, we have to, we gotta get out of here.
I was just answering the question.
I'll make a motion to, to approve this on-time with a, with a lifeline. Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Poor Shannon, uh, Shannon's been here just like, I just want a car, guys. I'm not here to fight about.
We're not giving you any discounts, just so you know.
Yeah, just a little van for my dog.
Shannon needs a dog to pet.
What would she say if we asked the table? We're, we're not making that recommendation.
No, no, no.
Uh, you wanna come on up, Shannon and Amanda?
Okay. Letter G, consideration of possible action to approve the purchase of a Ford Transit Connect Van IV, the Harlingen Animal.
Hold on, I'm sorry, did you read the caption?
Wait, 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 wait. Did he read the caption on, on that?
Initially?
Yes, he did.
Okay.
How many years ago was that?
How many motions ago?
We have three motions.
All right, sorry, Amanda.
No problem.
That's right.
Van IV, the Harlingen Animal Shelter to transport animals to and from the veterinary clinics, offset adoption events and foster homes when needed.
Is there any discussion?
No, make a motion to approve. Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's that gonna cost, he asked?
Letter H.
Here it is. It's.
Thirty-eight, three sixty-eighty-two.
Okay, 38. Ballpark 38.
Thirty-eight, three sixty-eighty-two.
Okay, thank you.
They're not getting the, what is it, the superior edition?
The platinum?
Yeah, no.
That, that's what it is, platinum.
Dogs are gonna ruin stuff.
And leather.
I know. Y'all are doing a fabulous job. Amanda, let's move on.
Letter H, consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance of first reading, amending the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter Six, Animals, Article Two, Administration and Enforcement, Division One, and enacting Section dash twenty-six, establishing a dedicated fund entitled the Harlingen Animal Shelter Fund in the city's financial management and reporting system to account for all fines collected by the city resulting from the enforcement of certain animal control ordinances and dedicating exclusive use of those city funds for the operation of the Harlingen Animal Shelter.
Mark, could you read the ordinance first, please?
Sure. An ordinance amending the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter Six, Animals, Article Two, Administration and Enforcement, Division One, and enacting Section Six dash twenty-six, establishing a dedicated fund entitled the Harlingen Animal Shelter Fund in the city's financial management and reporting system to account for all fines collected by the city resulting from the enforcement of certain animal control ordinances and dedicating exclusive use of those city funds for the operation of the Harlingen Animal Shelter.
I have a question. Shouldn't we have this, this account open already from years, years before?
No, it goes, it goes to general fund.
What's that?
It goes to the general fund. It doesn't go directly to the animal shelter.
So the one that we had thirty some odd years ago before the Humane Society was going straight to the, uh, general fund?
It, it always has. All fines go to the general fund.
There was separate, uh, animal control and the shelter.
I'm referring to before the Humane Society.
No, we've, we've never had anything that went specifically for that. There are some funds from the court that go to certain, uh, projects like the dollar for security, the dollar for, um, computer internet, uh, there's another dollar that we collect for that. But those are the only ones that go to those funds and are only used by municipal court for those purposes.
How much have we?
This right here, this ordinance is just specifically the money that is collected from animal control citations, um, animals at large, running around, bites, any kind of citation from animal control, then, um, the state takes its portion and the remaining portion goes to the general fund. All this is going to do is that it's gonna go to an account to go back into the, the shelter. And so the idea is that we would have a fund for spay and neuter and be able to assist and lessen the, the burden on the, on the taxpayer.
I just wanted to ask if it's possible, how much have we spent above $400,000?
I don't have that number, Commissioner, off the top of my head.
Could you provide us that? I'm, I'm sure there's gonna be a, another instance to where something else is gonna be added to that. And please include, uh, the labor, supplies and equipment put in by, uh, Public Works to bring that up to, up to, uh, in an estimate as to how much we're gonna pay in utilities.
So that's not on, that's not on this, um, that's not for this agenda item.
No, but it'll, it'll, it'll come up, so she'll be ready. Thank you.
All right. Did we read this caption? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Sorry?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board appointments, uh, board?
I've not met.
I have a few, let me see. Yes. I have Liza Macias to the Downtown Improvement Board and, uh, Delia Abila to the Charter Review Committee and Melinda Weaver to the Charter Review Committee.
What was Delia's last name name?
Abila?
Abila.
A-B-I-L-A.
None. I have two. I have Minerva Simpson to the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee and to the Charter Review Committee, I have Ms. Chavez.
So, not to be like that, but on the Animal Shelter Advisory Board, we've already had this conversation, I don't know if we meet, like, remember by statute, we have to have certain positions and I don't know if that advisory board has the positions that we necessarily need to have by statute, so.
What, what position is missing?
Would, I would have to double check, right? So, uh, yeah, I would have to double check.
I think you can take the.
I'm just saying that I think right now they cannot be meeting or making.
Right.
Uh, any changes because we haven't appointed people that meet the statutory requirement. So like you appointed the vet, which is one of the positions. I appointed a city official, which was another position. But you could even slide over Shannon because it's someone who runs an animal shelter, I think it was one of the other slots, and Shannon covers both. So hypothetically, you could do a city or county official. We, you guys have to look, that's why.
I think that there is two that are just residents.
Correct, but if there's already people on there that.
Oh, okay, I don't know.
Are just residents and don't meet the statutory provisions.
Mine's just a resident.
Yeah, so he already s- snacked, uh, has one of those. And I don't know what Mesmore had, Mike has, and I don't know what Frank has. So hypothetically, these three have already taken two of those spots and you two need to pick up those statutory required spots.
I think he's resigned, right? No, he hasn't.
So food for thought, just keeping things funny.
Keeping it fun.
City Hall, keeping things fast and.
Well, I haven't made an appointment because, uh, I only made the one because I intend on making, I just don't know what that looks like, but I'll make sure to do that, but, um, so, I don't know. Does that fit the?
I'd have to check what position's open, I don't know which ones are. So for now, I still wanna appoint her, but then if it, she doesn't fit, then I'll, then I won't, uh, we'll just put it on, it'd be the safer bet.
Well, it doesn't go through with the appointment process if it doesn't.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Is there, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve all the recommendations or appointments y'all have made.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.[1659.21] Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
While we're on this topic, but still before we leave, has staff made the, uh, recommendations to which boards are going to be struck from the ordinances? Remember we tabled the omnibus...
You said, you said you wanted us to give you...
Oh, did I say us, us? Or I thought it was staff. I apologize.
I, I understood you that for us to give you input.
That's what I understood. Okay, I apologize and I'm waiting for y'all's input, guys. Oh, snap, thank you. Always on time. Leave that.
So I think I told you last time, I got it highlighted here, the finance corporation...
So these are the ones, if you don't mind me sharing them. So these are the ones Ford has, has brought up, if you guys want to write this down for your notes. It's Housing Finance Authority Corporation Board, which I think you had already mentioned that one there. Municipal Auditorium Advisory Board, Landmarks and Local History Advisory Board, uh, LRGV Development Council, Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council and the Hospital Authority.
We don't have a...
That's...
They're all in that book.
Oh, wow. Well, that's, that's a separate petition. I don't...
Can I see the list, sir? I think I have it.
Yeah. You, you take the list and then if we can have it...
But we're not voting on it.
No, 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 no. It's just being presented.
I agree. The ones that I didn't even know existed, they're not in operation, so, yeah.
They say they're all listed in there, so let's...
You went to the landmark and, and what?
History.
I've never heard that before.
It's in our list.
Give me the gavel.
Since, since we're still on the boards, a quick question, or Josh, have they, has the, um, Keep Harlingen Beautiful Board made another attempt to meet?
Not yet. Nothing of a worry. I'll follow up with it.
It's in the back.